Being 7:00, I'm going to call to order the Wolfborough ZBA for November 14th, 2022. I'm Audrey Klein, the chairperson, Suzanne Ryan, vice chair, Tim Cronin, our clerk, Luke Freidenberg, a member, Sarah Silk, our regular member, is absent and excused tonight. The alternate, Sabette Strowman, is absent and excused, although she might be remote. Alternate Chuck Sumner, and we expect Kate McMonan, but I don't see her here yet. She's also an alternate. We're trying to get a full board because we're missing a couple of people.
You could point to Chuck.
Trying to see if that's her right here coming. What I would like to do, are the Beckwiths here? You are, okay. I would like to reorder the agenda and hear the Beckwith case first and then the solar case. Is that amenable to everybody on the board?
I'd move to adjust the agenda to have the second case be first.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Me. Okay.
Just to, I didn't have a chance to tell you regarding the minute taking. Leanne called me just before I left the house and said if there's an issue, she'd be happy to listen to the recording and do the minutes tomorrow.
Okay, Luke's going to do the sketch out of the minutes, the important points, so we can maybe have her fill that in. We can talk about that later. Kate, thank you for joining us. We just reordered the agenda. We're going to listen to the Beckwiths case first and then the solar case after. And I'd like you to sit in for Sarah as she's missing tonight on the first case. Are you all set? I'll let you get settled. So, one of the reasons I'd like to hear this first, the case 16-SE-22 first, is because I am, I'm a bit confused with the application section that was applied for. Tim. And Chuck can have one to follow along with. Oh. I'm sorry. So if you just quickly flip to the second page, the bottom of the second page, in the past, we had one time where we determined that a variance was not necessary because the application actually met the terms of the ordinance. Therefore, we did not need to hear the variance and we dismissed the case. So this is written in a training manual and it does say that in RSA 674332, the ZBA shall have all the powers of the administrative official from whom the appeal is taken and can make such order or decision as ought to be made. And that previous situation fell under this. And I'm going to ask you to take a look at this application with me and we can talk through whether, in fact, that section that's listed is appropriate for this application. So, does everybody follow me so far?
Yep.
Okay. The application, if you read the notice to a butters, you read the case. Tim, do you want to read the case out?
Which document are you looking?
This is off the notice to a butters. I can give you mine if you'd like.
Yes, please. Notice to a butters, Anna Mitt Romney, 2020, family, 27, Green Leaf Drive, tax map number 243-22, case number 16-SE-22, public hearing for special exception under Article VI, Chapter 175, Section 43H. No nonconforming portion of a building that is without a roof such as a deck shall be roofed over or enclosed unless it receives a special exception. A desk expansion shall not exceed, it should be a deck, expansion shall not exceed 25% of the nonconforming portion and cannot further encroach into the setback. Formal submission for a public hearing.
Thank you. So, reading that section, I have a couple of issues. No nonconforming portion of a building. I don't see a patio as being a portion of a building. So that was my first pause. So this is not a portion of a building in my mind, this is a patio. Shall be roofed over or enclosed unless it receives a special exception. And then the second part is a deck expansion, and there's no deck here, so there can't be an expansion, shall not exceed 25% of the nonconforming portion, and even if there were a deck, it cannot further encroach into the setback, which it does. So, looking at the sections that I have passed to you with the little stars on them, the third little star is the section that they applied under. And if you read under the section for nonconforming uses, there's also several, there's, I think, nine different potential ways you can increase a nonconforming use. The other four are very clear that nonconforming uses can't be within a setback unless it's a variance. And in this case, we actually have a shorefront setback and we also have a property line setback that's being proposed to be encroached upon. So I don't think that a special exception is what this plan needs, just going by the, you know, the number H that they applied for, and that it would need to fit under one of these other ones that requires a variance, plus a property line variance. So if anybody wants to look at the plan, take a minute with that.
Is Jason here?
Uh, yeah. Do we have to open the public hearing to hear from him?
No, our code officer.
Oh, that Jason.
Our code officer.
He is, but he's not in the room. Well, he was here, but he's not in the room.
He's in the building.
You want me to get him?
Um, well, I'm interested to know, he did write the denial. I know that's not his area of expertise. I'm wondering how it was reviewed, you know, whether it came in two minutes before the deadline and it wasn't reviewed, whether it was reviewed sitting with the town planner and this was the result, and Jason could probably tell us that. I also noticed, if you look at the elevations, that there's, it's not simply a roof over the patio, it's actually a deck from the second floor indicating that they'll replace those windows with doors. So it's a roof deck, I guess. And, um, in any case, either of those would require a variance.
So, the denial we have, you're saying Jason didn't sign that?
No, I think Jason did sign it. I'm not sure, I can't tell what that says.
Well, his name is typed above it.
Okay, yeah, I think Jason did sign that, but I...
Well, hopefully he can shed some light on.
Yep.
If he's still here.
Otherwise, the third page of what I handed out is the second page of the zoning board of adjustment handbook that goes along with the second page. It's just, they have a couple of really good sections here for future study or, you know, reading if you'd like it. Does everybody have their site plan? I want you to take a look at, the red area is the area under consideration for this application. Right in front of that, there's a solid black line that indicates a property line between these two buildings that we were standing between earlier today. I hate to use this word, but lots have been gerrymandered in order to get two separate lots at some point in the past. And that property line now skims right by the front of this patio. And in front of that property line towards the water is the shoreline. So we got the shoreline and then almost immediately the property line, which causes the need for that second property line setback for any kind of building that goes on.
Late, it's interesting that the plan interchanges the word patio and deck. In one portion, you see that it says, remove and replace existing stone patio, then when you read the notes, it says, talks about the decks and porches. Patios and locks.
The planner's comments say, current proposal is to install a roof over an existing deck located within the 50-foot shorefront. It's, no, it's clearly not a deck, it's a patio.
I would agree.
And I'm just concerned because if we start considering patios as part of a building, we're going to be in trouble all over the place, among other things.
Did you say Jason, is he in the building?
Yeah. So do, is it worth waiting for him or is there any more discussion on this? Tim?
Did you, did you ask him to come up?
Says right in the...
He said he'd be right up.
Yep. Special exception is requested as provided in Article VI.
Um...
But yet the application is...
17543H.
Right here.
Oh, it's also written on here.
It's this one. The Beckwith letter.
Okay, after all the pages of... So what are you pointing out exactly?
It's this document.
I don't know where mine went to. It's usually behind all the pages of the applic, of the form. That's never used, there we go. Article VI, Section 17543H.
But it says, in the words right before that, it says, a special exception is requested.
Right.
So the builder is saying they need a special exception, but the application says variance is required.
Well, no, the builder is saying they, they're asking for a special exception under that H, and the application is also referring to that number, but that section says that you can't encroach on the setback, so they can't actually use that section to make application. They need a variance, not a special exception. Jason, I know that, well, I think you signed the notice of decision on this patio. Can you tell me if the applicant sat down with the town planner first and went through this project and got information about what they were applying for?
I believe that was what sparked it. We talked to Tavis.
Or did they come in at two minutes before the deadline, drop the package, and then you just kind of wrote the denial based on what they wrote?
It was based off what was explained to me on the, what they were looking to do.
And who explained that to you, the applicant or the zoning administrator?
Applicant in passing, but talked to the, talked to town planner as well.
Okay. I know that zoning is not your area of expertise, I don't expect it to be. I just wanted to understand how this application came together. Anybody else have a question for Jason?
Um, yeah, we're having a discussion about whether it should be applied as a variance or a special exception.
Well, part of it came from the definition of the zoning one is for a structure. If you read it one way, the patio is part of a structure and they're putting a roof over that structure.
Uh, yes, but number H says no nonconforming portion of a building. If it had said structure, I would have, I would have considered that, yeah, that's true, patios are structures, but the number H says portion of a building.
He, um, he said a disadvantage, he doesn't have one of these.
Right.
Would you like a copy of this that we're reading from?
I think I have your, I have a copy of the packet, I believe.
Oh, okay. It's not in the packet, it's something I put together. But it is right out of the zoning manual, it's, in 17543, there are nine lines, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I. And I have just pulled out five of those as being relevant to this application. So I don't have any other questions for Jason. Anybody else? So my feeling is, based on what I'm reading for sections, that I would consider a motion to dismiss this case based on the application not being relevant to the section that was applied for?
Um, I would add to that, that we not open the public hearing and that we dismiss this case as it is filed under the wrong provision of the ordinance, the case being tax map 24302, case 16SE22, and that we do so without prejudice.
Questions or can discussion or a second? We haven't opened the public hearing.
Could I have a point of order?
Point of order? What would that be?
I just wanted to know if, there's, under the definition of building in 175, 175, it talks about porches, garages, balconies, stairways, and similar structures. I'm wondering if a patio would be considered a similar structure?
I think if we considered all patios part of the, a portion of the building, that we would have done a lot of different decisions in the past, but also you'd need to consider that it says and cannot further encroach into the setback, no matter what it is.
Right, and this isn't encroaching any further than the patio.
The part, the new part that's being built is, it's new, the roof deck is new, and I haven't opened the public hearing, so, thank you.
Yep.
Any comments to, to Ryan's, that was Jim Ryan's, by the way, correct? And notate that. Any comments to what he had to say?
If they come back, is it going to be just referencing a different portion of our...
That was going to be my next question is for, there is a motion though, so I mean...
We could, we could discuss, motion for discussion.
It was moved and seconded and, yes, it can be discussed.
Who seconded it?
I don't think anyone's...
Didn't you?
I don't think anyone's seconded yet.
Did you?
No. I mean, I think it can be seconded for discussion. No second, no discussion.
Are we just going to tell them to come back and just reference a different section of the code?
It's a different section, but it's also a, a whole different list of things to consider. You know, the special exception criteria is one page and the variance criteria is another page. And in fact, again, they would need two variances, property line, shorefront.
I said without prejudice, that means they can bring it back.
Right.
Oh, yeah, I understand. That, that's where I was going to go with it, I was going to try to, you know, aid the applicant in the sense of, if we deny it, that's fine, but if we're going to deny it, let's at least...
Not, not deny, that's different.
No, I'm sorry, yeah, not hear it tonight. If we're going to do that, then it'd be nice to, you know, if the application should come back as a variance, is what we're saying, most likely, based on...
They would, they would need to, yeah. Under one of these other sections, I'm not really sure which one, because, well, actually the last section in 17543 indicates that any proposed construction activity located within the setback area with further encroachment shall require a variance. I don't have it in front of me, but there's a section someplace about encroaching on the second floor or expanding a second floor over a first floor that's already in a setback, and I, I don't, I didn't put that in here.
So did we get a second? Did you second it?
I did not second it.
Did you second it?
No, but I'd be happy to second it.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
So, we're just not opening the public hearing if we...
I think the only reason to do that would be to give the applicant a chance to argue why this is a portion of a building or why this is not encroaching any further, and I don't necessarily need to hear that, but if other people do, we could.
I have no problem hearing it, I may reach the same conclusion, but I have no problem hearing it. I do think, I do agree that, in looking at this, you know, in giving the applicant the best possible means forward, if it came back as a variance, you know, I think that, that, that sounds to me like where it needs to go based on the information I'm seeing from what you gave me tonight, so.
So I, I mean, I would entertain opening the public hearing for the narrow purpose and not hearing, not, not hearing the special exception.
You've already got a motion on the floor, seconded, I think it should be voted up or down, and then if you want to do something else, but it, I clearly made the addition to the motion that it is without prejudice.
I understand that.
So they can come back for a public hearing. We get ourselves in difficulties when we open public hearings and then condition them and then continue them. I think it's cleaner just to do it this way. Make a decis, we've made the decision that the application is filed under the incorrect provision of the ordinance and they come back.
My, my only, my only argument to that, with, with complete respect, is that, you know, I feel that, for me, I feel like the applicant not only has, doesn't have the right, but I would like to, I would like to give Jim Ryan's and the applicant the benefit of the doubt to at least argue it, and if we still reach that same conclusion, that's fine with me.
I agree with that.
I do, I do feel the applicant should be able to argue the special exception. I mean, we're here anyways and they've put in their time, so...
So I think...
That would be my, that'd be my only...
I would like to, I would like to hear Jim Ryan's again delve into what he was saying about how the patio could be considered part of the structure.
So then, in that case, we would...
And if that was the case, they wouldn't be increasing the preexisting nonconforming.
Um, well, that's for them to argue and I think we would have to go into that, which we will. So can you, do you take back your motion for later?
That's a compromise, yeah.
I can't think of the word for it, but...
I would reconsider.
Withdraw. Withdraw your motion.
So you're going to open this public hearing under the provisions of which they filed, which is for a special exception?
And that's the rub, because I don't think we can hear the special exception until we answer this question.
And I agree. I think there was an error made in, not on their part, but in part by our...
But I do agree with Tim and Luke that I think it's, behooves us to hear an argument on the section that we're looking at, and I would like to do that as well.
Give them each five minutes, very short.
Right. So, so...
They could also, at the point, they get up and they could also say, make the argument, and they could, they could even withdraw and say, we're going to come back, you know, based on whatever.
That's fine, yeah, either way. It has to be renoticed as a variance, whether they withdraw it or, well, it could be.
I would say, what I would say at our expense, because it seems as though there was a miscommunication on our end.
Well, it sounds like there's an argument on their end that might have been convincing to the administration, so I don't know the answer to that, but I think we should hear, we should open the public hearing.
Okay, to move things along, I'll withdraw my motion reluctantly.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing and, and...
We get a vote on that.
To withdraw it?
I would think so, yeah.
We didn't vote to accept it.
I think she can, as long as Kate seconds.
She's got to withdraw her second.
I withdraw the second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I would like to open the public hearing and hear the discussion on why this section of the code is relevant to this application.
And, and just an administrative cleanup, did you announce that we did a site visit?
No, because all I did was read the a butters notice.
For the record, for the minutes?
Um, here with me a minute. The site visit was conducted today at 4:00 in the afternoon with Tim Cronin, Chuck Sumner, Audrey Klein, Suzanne Ryan, Kate...
McMahon.
McMahon, and Luke Freidenberg. Jim, could you pull that mic a little closer?
Yes, I can. Are you ready, Madam Chair, for me or...
Uh, yes, can you talk about...
Fire away.
Talk about Section 17543A1H that you implied under and why you chose that section and how that doesn't conflict with the other sections under the nonconforming uses, please.
Sure. For the record, I'm Jim Ryan's from Horizons Engineering, and though I didn't put the application together, I was asked if I would just come and participate in the process. And so they were sent here with a, you know, by special exception, with the assumption that the patio was in fact a structure and part of the building. It's, goes right up to it, and what they're putting on is not exceeding that. So when the chair brought up the fact that the zoning ordinance says building, as I, as I mentioned in my point of order, you know, the, the definition of building is a structure, which we know a structure, a patio is a structure by definition, is intended to support the, support, enclosure, shelter, or projection, protection of persons, domestic animals, chattel or property for the purposes of determining the exterior measurements or footprints in order to locate the setback. Buildings shall include all structures such as open or closed porches, garages, carports, balconies, stairways, and other similar structures. And I think that, you know, a patio that's not near the primary structure, you know, I think there's certainly an argument that that... you know, I think there's certainly an argument that that might be a stretch, but this is right up against the existing structure. And they're not, they're not exceeding, whether it's the waterfront setback or that side yard setback, they're getting no closer. In fact, they're further away than the patio with this, with this cover. And so by the section that was cited, Section H, where you can have a special exception for a roof, as long as you are no further encroaching, it seemed like a reasonable decision that it was denied for and why they, why they came here.
Well, I guess I would say that all buildings certainly are structures, but I don't believe that all structures are buildings. And I think it's, I don't think the intent was to include masonry, earthen-type structures such as patios in the footprint of non-conforming or, or new construction. So if that would mean that historically Wolfboro has not allowed paver patios in front of a house within 50 feet of the lake. But they have, correct? Typically.
I, I've, I've been before the board to get a variance for that.
Variance on what section?
I don't remember, but it was, it was on Sewell Road probably seven or eight years ago.
Excuse me, do you know, was there a variance requested when they built that patio that is existing now that's within the lake setback?
I could, actually, that's why I got the old building permits. Some nine or 10 years ago, that patio was rebuilt from an old patio in the same footprint. The old patio would have been there before the shorefront setback regulations.
Pre-existing non-conforming?
Yes. Well... Again, my understanding is Wolfboro doesn't have a process for patios within the 50 feet. DES does with the shorefront permitting, because it's not, it's impervious.
Correct. And they, and we do have the shoreline permit for this.
You have a shoreline permit because DES allows a deck, a 12-foot deck within the 50 feet, correct?
It was, no, it was a permit by notification because there was no additional impervious, and it's...
And you're allowed to have a deck with it. I mean, if you were, if you were increasing the enclosed part of the house, that would be a different story for DES.
But we're not enclosing it, it's just an open structure.
I know, but I'm saying that DES by right allows for a 12-foot deck to be in, to add on to a non-conforming structure without permitting.
Correct.
Right. So it doesn't really have anything to do with whether it's impervious or not underneath, they just permit it.
Well, it does, because anything forward of the 50-foot mark, if it's accessory structure, then it has to be porous.
But a deck is not an accessory structure for DES, it's part of the primary structure.
Correct.
So they permit it as an exception to that.
Yes, they, it, it was permitted under, it was a permit by notification with the, see what they said.
So was this particular plan permitted by DES? I mean, it doesn't have, it's not stamped or anything?
Yes, this, this plan was permitted by DES.
So I guess, and this is, this is very nuanced, but my point being, DES allowed the expansion of basically new construction deck because they permit a deck on a, on a, attached to a primary building as an exception to their shorefront rule, whether, no matter what's underneath it.
That's correct.
So the fact that they did that is completely separate from whether or not the patio is a structure for Wolfboro's ordinances.
Right, I mean, they're two separate, they're two separate permits, but I was just pointing out that the fact that somebody, I don't know if it was you, but somebody on the board mentioned about the shoreline permitting, and I just wanted to point out that they did get their shoreline permit.
I actually assumed that you'd be going for that afterwards, but...
I'm sorry?
I assumed that you'd be going for the shorefront permit afterwards, but you're saying it's already done.
It's already done.
So I'm still looking...
Yeah, they, they, what they said was, the shirt, in accordance with 483B5, it was accepted because it's a permit by notification. Doesn't say, other than citing the statute and WQ 140619.
I looked it up, so I'm, I'm pretty confident of that. It's, it's a cha, actually, a change in their rules since I read it last time, that decks are considered part of the primary structure. And they, there's an exception for them within the 50 feet on an, on a legally non-conforming building.
That's correct.
Yep.
Can I ask a question?
Of course, please.
I'm just looking at 17543, letter H. "No non-conforming portion of a building that is without a roof, such as a deck, shall be roofed over or enclosed unless it receives a special exception. A deck expansion shall not exceed 25% and so forth." But it says, "No non-conforming portion of a building that is without a roof, such as a deck." Is that the only non-conforming? I mean, could it be a patio? Is that non-conforming?
So they're saying such as a deck because I think they didn't want to exclude some other things if they didn't think of them. Could it be a patio? I don't think that was the intent, personally. Looking at a lot of projects that have patios in front of them within that, you know, 50 feet, I don't think the intent was for a port, a building, a portion of a building to include a masonry, stone, or earthen structure that's next to the building. In fact... Am I correct in thinking that patios are allowed within sideline setbacks?
I guess that would be a question for Tavis or Jason. I, I don't, I don't know.
I, I believe so. But of course, I can't really answer that question. So that tells me that they're not seen as a part of the building, because if that was the case, they wouldn't be allowed to encroach on any setback, property setback, you know, shorefront setback, any, any other type of setback.
Yeah, I know, I know driveways are clearly, which are a structure, are allowed to, to pierce it. I, I don't know about patios off the top of my head without looking at prior applications or having a conversation with Tavis.
Audrey, you said, you said that the original deck was redone. And the original, the deck patio, which to me are almost the, are the same thing. It's aquatic ground level is to sit down and enjoy your family. So if the original one was done before the shoreline setbacks, the new one was put there after that. And all they want to do is put a, a small structure above that that is not increasing any of the non-conform, it's pre-existing non-conforming. I think that, I think that patio is part of the house. I tend to agree with Jim on that.
I, I don't, so we, we just disagree on that point. And I guess we just kind of hit on the one that's most obvious to me, and that is, patios are permitted to encroach on all kinds of setbacks where buildings are not.
But there's a lot of buildings on that lake that are within 50 feet that were put up a long time ago.
Yes, but what's being added...
Just like this patio.
What's being added is all new construction, so it's not, it's part of the building what's being added. The deck is part of the building, it's part of the primary building. And it's encroaching on, on two setbacks. So whereas the patio is allowed to encroach, I don't believe that the structure of the building is allowed to encroach. And I guess I, I'm still at that place, but I'm not the only one on the board, so...
I was trying to look up definitions. Is there a definition for building, patio, deck?
There's a definition for building that was read, and I was going to go back to it.
It's 175, 175.
I wish I had page numbers. 175, 175?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. "Building any structure designed or intended for the support, enclosure, shelter, or protection of persons, domestic animals, chattels, or property for purposes of determining exterior measurements or footprint in order to locate the setback line. Buildings shall include all attached structures such as open or closed porches, carports, garages, balconies, stairways, and other similar structures." I still perceive a difference between an earthen or masonry structure and a built, part of a building.
So do you think, or is, do you need a building permit to, to build a patio?
Typically, no.
So in the built, when this patio was rebuilt, did they get a building permit for that?
They did, but they did other work. So it was, there was a... So the building permit would be required if the patio was of certain size or height, even if it was made out of masonry, as you know. Like a retaining wall, over a certain height requires a building permit.
Right.
But if, if, if Luke decided to build a patio outside of his house on grade, outside your door, you could flatten it out, put down some sand, put down some pavers, and not worry about the property line. And that would be allowed, and you wouldn't need a permit. So how is that part of the, part of the building?
I, I just was saying, if they had gotten a building permit before, then at some point in time, someone felt that that was necessary because it was part of the structure.
Part of a structure, again, buildings are structures, but not all structures are buildings. So, yeah, it could be a structure and require a building permit, that doesn't mean it's a building.
But it's, it could be and such, you know, it's in that definition. I mean, a set of stairs isn't a building, but it's in that definition specifically.
Well, I, I know from experience that granite steps, in fact, don't need to be within the setback, whereas wood steps do, so I, I think there's a difference there.
Well, I guess...
Well, you know what? We've gone back and forth on buildings, structures, decks, patios. You've opened the public hearing to give them a chance to explain that. I think it's been debated back and forth, and I think we need to move to the next level. Either we go forward with this as a special exception, or we don't, and we...
Let me, I've been doing all the talking. Did you have any questions? Any more questions?
Uh, a moment.
Tim, did you have any more questions?
Nope.
More questions?
More of a point for you, I guess, and Suzanne, or maybe for you, Audrey. If, if the applicant did bring it, I'm, I'm not asking you to use a crystal ball or anything, but if the applicant did bring it back as a variance, in your mind, would you be more willing to entertain the deck, the enclosed deck as a variance? Because then it wouldn't necessarily set a precedent that all, like you're saying, all structures are...
Absolutely. That, that is the difference, yes. Variance is something that's not otherwise allowed that we're permitting. And a special exception is something that's allowed within, with these certain restrictions. So I do think that it has a potential, you don't, has a potential of somebody arguing that we have looked at it a certain way in the past.
Is this just relevant to the deck or, or to the patio also? Because the patio was...
Patio is already there, so...
It's already pre-existing, so does he need any exceptions, special exception, or variance for the patio?
Well, he's not, you mean for redoing the patio?
Yes.
No, he might need a building permit.
Right, but he doesn't need, there's, there's no special exception.
That's correct, that can be replaced.
So the only thing he needs is a variance. We think what he needs is a variance to put up the deck, what will become a deck, which is also going to be a roof over part of the patio.
That's my position, yes.
Thank you.
Last statement?
I was just, you know, if, if it's the, the board's opinion that the patio doesn't qualify as a structure, then I guess if, if the board is, you know, we would withdraw the application if that were the case.
And just to clarify, I, I'm not saying it's not a structure. It clearly is a structure. It's not part of the building, it's not a portion of the building.
All right. So if that's, if that's the, if that's the decision, then, then we would, we would withdraw the application?
Before, before you do that, I'm reading a, a letter from 1997, September 12th, where they were asking the questions about a structure, "Something constructed or erected other than a building, the use of which requires permanent location on or in the ground or attached to something having permanent location on or in the ground, including but not limited tennis courts, swimming pools, and television, satellite antenna, and other items." And this fellow that wrote this thing was Robert Hausman. Said, "As zoning administrator, I am required to take the most conservative restrictive approach in applying or interpreting these regulations. Therefore, I have concluded that the concept of this patio as proposed is a structure requiring compliance with the applicable structural setbacks for the zoning district. My conclusion is based on the fact that the patio is elevated 90 inches above grade on one end and not built flush with existing grade. In addition, the overall size of the structure was taken into consideration. Below, please find the applicable setbacks."
So was that with the building permit application?
Yeah, mhm.
So it must have gotten a variance?
I didn't go through everything here, but...
So what he's saying is this patio, but I didn't read it, but I'm just quoting what you just said, if we understand the same thing.
It's the last paragraph right there on the first page.
Okay, it's a structure, it has to meet structural setbacks for the zoning district. It doesn't, or the setbacks were different back then, I don't know.
Or they got a variance.
Or they got a variance.
Which means it's pre-existing non-conforming.
We know this, we know the patio is pre-existing non-conforming. Let me back up on that. It's a variant, an item approved by variance is not non-conforming. It's not a non-conforming item. And I would have to go back through documents and find that, but pre-existing non-conforming doesn't apply to things that were approved by variance. They are separate.
But this is the Wolfboro plan, planner, saying that this, this stone patio as proposed is a structure requiring compliance. So they went through the, I don't, I'm sure that there's a, there's a...
A variance.
A variance in here somewhere.
Right.
So I tend to agree with Jim. If it's already, if it's already labeled as a structure by the town of Wolfboro...
I didn't say it wasn't a structure. But the new part that's being built over it isn't included in the variance that that must have gotten to be there. That's, the other part is a whole separate part. You can't add that on to something that was a variance before.
Can we give, can we give a special exception for an item that had a variance before? Do we need to give a, I mean, can you give a special exception for, to do something on an item that had a variance before? Do you need a variance to do a variance?
Well, we're not actually giving the special exception on the patio. We're giving the special exception on the construction of the roof.
Right, so that's...
Or variance on the construction of the roof.
Yeah, but can we, can we do that? Can we give a special exception for an item that was covered under a variance? Because the structure is the, was, from what I'm seeing is that basically what Rob said, Rob Hausman said, is the patio is therefore part of the structure because it has a variance? But can we even, can we give a special exception? Or a additional structure?
The patio is a structure, but that doesn't make it part of the building.
Okay.
That's still, still my line there. Buildings are structures, but not all structures are buildings. And the patio is a structure, just like a tall retaining wall is a structure, cellphone tower is a structure, but they're not buildings. He doesn't anywhere say that the patio is part of the building or a building. He's saying it's a structure that's required to meet the setbacks, which I think makes my point that anything in addition also needs a variance.
Well, I started to say, and you picked up where I was speaking, and kind of headed in that direction. You asked the question something like, if they were to come back for variance, how would we handle it, or how would we treat it? And...
I don't think that was his question. I don't know how you're going to answer that, but...
It was a hypothetical. It was before.
I mean...
I'm not asking anyone to commit to it. I'm just saying, of course.
No, no, no. But the point is that the variance is allowing something that's not allowed.
Correct.
So that's what we'd be looking at. It wouldn't be setting an administrative decision on what, what a patio was. Was it part of a building or not part of a building? It would be just allowing the construction.
Right. But now we think there's a variance in place in order, for the patio to have built in the first place. So that variance is still valid?
Yeah, forever.
Okay, so we don't need a variance for that. Does a roof, to roof most of that patio over, does, that would not qualify for a special exception?
That's my understanding based on the reading of this.
Yeah, okay.
Roof and deck, yeah.
Just one further question, because I just don't know the answer to this, Audrey. If, if the, if the patio was granted a variance back that time, should the application for building even been denied, would it even need a special exception? If they already have a state shoreline permit, and they came and applied for a building permit, should the application have been denied by the planner or the code enforcement officer for the roof?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Well, it was denied, but it was denied based on this H.
Okay.
It should have been denied based on one of the sections that requires a variance. I'm not sure which one, because there's like four there that require variances, but like I, the last one, "Any proposed construction activity located within the setback area with further encroachment shall require a variance." I believe it has further encroachment because the wall of the house is here, and they're building a deck out, and that's a further encroachment.
Into the setback?
Into the setback, into both setbacks.
So they need two variances?
Yes.
But if they, but if the opinion of the zoning enforcement officer was that the, just for purposes of discussion, if the patio was the structure and they deemed it part of the building, then they wouldn't need a variance. They would be eligible for a special exception.
Well, that was their decision, but I think, I don't know if you were here when I started the discussion on RSA 67433-2, which says, "In every case, the ZBA shall have all the powers of the administrative official from whom the appeal is taken and can make such order or decision as ought to be made." So in the end, every case really is an administrative appeal of the denial of whether the board thinks that that was accurate or not.
Okay. I was under the impression that only if someone appealed the administrative decision could the, could the zoning board then...
Yeah, no, we, we can do that, yeah.
I'm going to make a suggestion.
Well, your alarm's going off, so that must mean something.
No, I'm going to suggest that we, I'm not making it as a motion, because I'd like to discuss it. I'm going to suggest that we continue this hearing and get legal counsel involved in this, because we have spent an hour trying to decide whether it's a patio or a deck, and which is allowed, and what, whether there was a variance or not. We haven't been thoroughly through the file. I guess the planner hadn't been thoroughly through the file, because he would have given us heads up. So how do we feel about continuing this?
I don't think that's necessary. I don't think our lawyer is going to give us legal counsel on the types of things we're talking about.
If the general feeling of the group is that this is a variance and not a special exception, and Jim has turned around and said they're willing to withdraw it and reapply as a variance is the path of least resistance without getting attorneys involved, I think that's the way to go.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if there's going to, if it's going to be continued, if no action is going to be taken tonight, we would withdraw the application without prejudice.
And if it's continued, it's continued, still written as a special exception. It doesn't give...
No, yeah, we can't continue it. We either have to dismiss it or withdraw it, which would both have the same consequences, really.
Oh, we would...
Why can't we continue it? Because we have to renotice it as a variance.
Jim's trying to give a comment.
Yeah, I was just going to say, in that case, you've got a long night ahead of you, maybe, so I would request that we withdraw the application without prejudice.
Take a vote on that?
I don't think we need to.
I mean, he can withdraw if he wants to.
He can withdraw.
No, you can't withdraw. Yes, thank you very much, and we hope to see you back with the variance application.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All righty.
Thanks, Jim.
Now, would you like to read the second case? Oh, thank you, Kate. I'm going to have Chuck sit for the second case. Thank you. All right.
Second case for this evening. Mountain Laurel Farms Solar Pasture Garden LLC and Amanda J. Brevard of North Wakefield Road, tax map number 9203, case number 15-V-22, public hearing for variance under chapter 175, section 125 of the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance to allow for a variance for use of non-permitted, that is not permitted in the residential agriculture zone. Site visit was held at 4:00. Chuck Sumner, Tim Cronin, Audrey Klein, Suzanne Ryan, Kate, I don't know why, McMahon? I got it. Kate McMahon, and that's it.
Thank you. So just a comment. It doesn't specifically say so, but what this reads to me like is it's a variance for a commercial use in a residential district. The type of commercial use is a solar farm. Is that right?
Multiple players here. Yes, essentially, this is...
Could you please state your name and address for the records?
My name is Jeffrey Christensen. I'm an attorney representing the applicant in this matter. Mountain Laurel Farms Solar Pasture Garden LLC.
Thank you.
It is a commercial use, yes, specifically a solar farm. If you grant a variance for one commercial use, it doesn't necessarily mean you're granting a variance for all commercial uses. So it would be specifically...
Can you put the microphone closer, please?
Sure. So this would be specifically requesting a variance for the particular use of a solar farm, not for all commercial uses broadly.
Great.
Ready? All right. So thank you to the board, Madam Chair. My name is Andrew Keller from New Hampshire Solar Garden. For the record, I'm the applicant and the developer of the project. So thank you all for coming out this afternoon to kind of walk the property. We didn't have the opportunity to talk and answer a lot of questions, so tonight I brought myself to speak anything specifically about the solar project itself. We have a conceptual design here from Nobis Engineering, who did all of the survey work and put this together, so you could have a visual over and above our walk that we did today. Jeff obviously introduced himself on the technical side, and he will take you through the application once I give you a couple-minute update, you know, respecting our time tonight. I want to keep this moving along if we can. We also have the property owners here as well. If there's any legacy questions about the property ownership, we're not going to put them on the spot, but if there's something I can't answer, I may look over my shoulder and ask for a little bit of guidance.
Point of order, I forgot to open the public hearing, so, public hearing, I've opened the public hearing. Now you may speak.
Should I do it all over again?
No.
Okay.
I second that.
I do, too. And we also have the abutter who we're working with in real time to figure out what the best access into the property is going to be. We have, again, some conceptual. We walked it today, so we kind of have an idea of what direction we're going in. But a lot of that will be left, obviously, for the planning process, assuming that this evening goes smoothly. So with that, I just want to take you through where we are right now, what this project is, for starters, what it, what it means for the community, what it means for the state of New Hampshire, and what steps have we taken so far to get to this point. So I've been developing solar projects around the state for over a decade, different sizes, different shapes, different communities. We've been doing this at, under the current state statute, which was 1 megawatt of solar. This is a 5-megawatt solar project. And the reason we're able to develop this project larger than the past state statutes was because about two years ago, the state took it upon themselves to bring a new program called Community Power. The acronym is Community Choice Aggregation, or CCA. And what that allows is a whole community, a whole town in New Hampshire, to come together, from a homeowner to the school, to the town, to businesses, bring all their power together as one, and go out to bid to make sure that everybody in the community can get the lowest possible price for power, which in today's market, that has a much deeper impact than even a year ago. So it allows a homeowner who might use, you know, $100 a month in electricity to get the same price as a school who might spend $10,000 a month in electricity. That's the concept of Community Power. It went through one more legislative session last year to clean up some details, won't bore you with the details with there, but there were some details that had to get worked out. So now, a lot of the different towns, and I think there's a couple dozen now that have voted it in, either through their Board of Selectmen or their annual town meeting with the voters, to allow for these programs to start to roll out. And then the Public Utility Commissioner, or now they call it the Department of Energy, is now approving these plans for different towns to roll these programs out and go out into the market and find power that can help lower the rates for everybody in a given community. So this project here is being developed under that concept, okay? So that's, that's how we sell, how we do it, and how the power is shared with the community. It could be the town of Wakefield. It won't likely be the town of Wolfboro, because you have your own municipal light and power here in town. We knew that going in. But your community can be the host of a project that can support your next-door neighbor, potentially. So we're a community of producing energy. The intent of that program was for a portion, not all of it, a portion of this power for a town to come from local renewable energy projects. Could be wind, could be biomass, could be solar, could be hydro, all different types. So what have we done to date? We obviously, we have...
I just didn't hear, why, why, why can't you get over to Wolfboro, just because of where the lots located?
Because of where the utility, it's utility franchise rights.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So where, again, where we are right now is, we have, yes, ma'am.
I know you've, you've got a rhythm, but can we, can we ask questions?
Absolutely. Stop me any long, anytime.
Just so I can get a picture in my mind. I've got a, a pink...
Yes.
Sort of a square here. But it doesn't tell me how many arrays, the size of them...
Sure.
The height.
Yep.
So can we start with that?
Absolutely. So the, the pink area you're seeing there is roughly 25 acres. The panels themselves will sit between 8 and 10 feet tall, and there'll be roughly 11,000 to 12,000 panels in total.
And how many are you going to get in that pink?
11,000 to 12,000 panels.
How many?
11, between 11,000 and 12,000 panels.
Arrays?
Solar panels, individual panels.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yep, it's, it's on there, but I don't know if the 25 acres was represented, or the height, sorry.
Which were the two open fields we were standing in this afternoon.
Correct, yep.
And then before, I'd like to, these questions upfront...
Sure, go for it.
So that, and I don't have to interrupt you.
No problem.
All right, so there's 20 acres in total that's going to get disturbed because of roadway and so forth. And, but 17 acres is going to be dedicated to the arrays, because you've got the two numbers in here.
Yeah, there are some different numbers, and I apologize, I can't speak directly to the, the definition of like, the, the total footprint of what we're using is the 25 acres that you're seeing here. The amount of disturbed area, based on how the state will review it from a stormwater perspective, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but it is beyond the state AOT requirement to go for an AOT...
And you're going to have to do site-specific?
For...
Disturbance of source...
Yes.
Site-specific?
Yep.
That's 144,000?
Over 100,000 square feet. Puts you into the alteration of terrain permit, which we are preparing all the work to submit tomorrow. We're going up...
And that includes, that includes the poles and the lines and the...
Yeah, the access road, exactly, yep.
Okay. And then the other thing was, on these easements, can you tell it, I guess there's one easement off of the subdivision area. That's the 40-foot wide one? And how long is that? There's nothing to show me the length.
Roughly 1,800 to 2,000 feet, I'm going to guess.
100 and what?
1,800, roughly.
That'll be the main access road to that location.
That's correct.
And then, and then the 20-foot one, how long is that? And, and that's going to be used for what?
That looks like it's just into the property, like a little parking area.
So you're looking at this 20-foot wide?
Yes, I follow you, yep. So I was just trying to get my perspective on the question you're asking.
Is it down here?
So the, the utility and access easement that'll come down off of the subdivision will be that roughly 1,800 feet I referenced. And then the last little section, the 20-foot section, is going to be near the solar array, near the detention basin, for the purposes of parking a maintenance vehicle there to be able to turn around if the fire department had to come down. That's the typical hammerhead that we would put on any of our projects.
Okay. Do you have, do you have a legal description of that 40-foot easement?
No, we don't, because we haven't started that. We, we have surveyed it. We're working with the current property owner to find the perfect spot. We literally just received this survey plan a couple days before we came in front of you. So we've been working through that process. That's why I was going to give you an update on what we've done to date to get here, so we could see if the project can move forward. We didn't want to keep going until we get to the...
So it's an easement for the, for the telephone poles and lines?
Yes, it'd be an...
It's not an easement to access the property?
Yes, it will be, too. Yep.
For your company?
Yep, because we'll have to go out twice a year to, to check on the project.
Currently, there is no easement there.
No, we do not have an easement with the current.
Not you, but the owner just doesn't have.
Yes. She's shaking her head, yes, where there is.
She what?
She's shaking her head that there is an easement there now.
There is an easement? An easement for what, for who?
Yeah, if, if you could come and, sorry, say who you are and talk into the mic so the people on the TV can see you.
My name's Amanda Beavard. I'm the owner of the property that's being leased for the solar farm. Excuse me. And there is a right-of-way to the property?
But, but it, who do you, I don't get who the easement's from, and too, is her. No, no, you said it's a right-of-way. Is it the same 40-foot wide right-of-way?
Uh, no, that, we are, we could not exactly determine where it was, so we found what would be the most appropriate, both for myself and for the housing development, because this is their open land, and they need to be able to get to it.
So, go ahead.
I have a question. When you look at this map here, there's a lot of green dots that are coming down, and it looks like on a property line, but yet, we walked in the road, so it's different. That may be where some of the confusion is.
Yeah, exactly. So, when we came down the, the natural trail that was there, and I didn't have the plan set with me, so I apologize if this was confusing, and we couldn't really discuss much.
It shows on the aerial view.
Yeah, you can see on the aerial view, which we walked, but the intent, after some discussions with Amanda and, and Tom, the abutter here, is the developer next door, is to find the path of least resistance using some of the existing access that's there, around the detention basin we all walked, and then, go over to the property line to keep that access road kind of away and some buffer, some natural buffer between your, the walking path that I think the folks in the neighborhood want us to use, continue to use, and put our access over close to, or if we had to, when we get to the planning board stage, if we need to push it over onto Amanda's and your son's property, right? Yep, the other property, we could do that, but initially, we've kind of surveyed putting it as close to the property line as possible. So, again, the access we have, we're in discussions on how to gain access either over Amanda and her son's property and/or utilizing this access into and where we walked today. We needed to get, make sure that we could.
And how?
Develop the project first.
Sorry. And how does this work with a private road? I mean, that's a private road all in through there that you're going to then have an access to. Have you, have you spoken to, if it's a, I don't know if it, if it's an association, I don't know.
Yeah, we needed to be able to identify where it was going to go. So, we spent the time, money to survey that area to see if we could put it there. And then, now, we're in the process of doing that. I guess I'm trying to understand what the concern, we're here tonight to see if the land, the property.
You're talking about when they come in, coming in.
Well, not just that, but when they're developing it. They're developing it, I mean, it's a private road. I'm not supposed to go riding around in there. So, I'm just saying, when you're developing it, and then, when you're servicing it, I would think you need some sort of agreement with the association.
Sure. So, again, my name's Jeffrey Christensen, and I think I can clarify some of the issues here. Right now, there is an existing easement to access this property through that area, and that easement includes going over that private road. There's some ambiguity as to exactly where that easement is located, I believe, and Amanda will correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not uncommon for a deed to say, oh, and this comes with the right to access your property over my property. It doesn't give a meets and bounds, it doesn't give an exact location for where that right of access is. What we're trying to do right now is get some meets and bounds, work out what is the best location for that easement. That may be amending the existing easement, that may be going over a different location altogether. That's something that's going to get worked out, partially through the planning board process, partially through, if this proposal can go forward, there was a certain point at which it's not worth trying to get a new easement for a solar farm, if you can't have a solar farm anyway. So, some of those details are still in process, working with the abutting landowner, working with the surveyors to find the best location for that.
So, you're going to try to get an easement from Browns Ridge Road all the way over to the 40-foot?
That's, that's one of the options being explored.
So, apparently, they already have with that, with the existing easement. They already have this going over Village Corner Road. That's what it sounds like to me, anyway.
Tom Dube, the owner of the development, and I'm here with the president and the association, but just for clarification purposes, the road is to become a town road, is the goal someday, so it is, does have the proper easements, does have all the proper stuff we need to go forward, once the road is 100% complete, for it to become a town road.
That's a whole nother discussion.
Yes, but I, I'm just saying, it's not a private road.
It's not a private road. It's not.
The town plows it?
The town does not plow it yet, because it's not fully complete.
It's a private road.
I think it's your opinion, I, I agree, but with your, you know, you have your right to your opinion, but my opinion is, someday, that road will become a town road.
If I may, maybe you could explain to me the concern, like, we're trying to get to the solar array to request this board to give us permission to put that type of an application on that property. If, for some reason, let's assume that tonight, the board was comfortable with our application, decided that it was the right use for that land, between now and when we get to the planning board, it will be our job to work with the association, to work with Tom, and make sure that we have, because if we can't show access to our property, then we're not going to be able to meet completeness at the application, at the planning board level. So, we're not here to discuss that portion of it. We're just trying to represent, give you a conceptual, more than just something on Google, that we really wanted to do our work to show you that we've surveyed it, we're preparing to establish the best location into the property, but we have to take a stopping point, because we've, you know, spent a significant amount of money and effort to get to this point, to hopefully get the board's understanding.
I understand, and that makes complete sense. I think, I think what, the issue I have with doing it this way, which makes total sense, is, say, we say, yes, this part is a great place for a solar farm, and being a commercial entity, this whole entrance thing changes a lot, and, and it has a different impact that we didn't consider, because we didn't have it in front of us. How do we, you know, how then do we assess that? The planning board's not going to assess a different impact, they're going to do their planning thing, but the impact was, you know, is what we're actually looking at in the variance scenario. So, I don't know how different you think it might get. So, I would be, I guess I would be more comfortable.
Do you, do you have an agreement for an access to that property with the road we walked down today?
Sure.
Do you already have permission to use the road we walked down today to view the property?
No, no. But, the bar, they have, their property has asked all of Village Corner, correct? So, I'm going to try to put my finger at point, right? So, we, we want to come down through what's already, well, traveled, but our land over this property is all of this and has the right of, right of, to further. So, the reason we.
Between some of the houses.
But the existing easement is between the, between some of the lots.
To your, to your point.
Goes in that north.
Yeah, the exact location, again.
Unknown.
Is not set forth.
So, just as a, an example, what if, if we were to go forward with looking at, you know, the solar field and, you know, the granting or not granting the variance for that, could we say, and the access within 100 feet one way or the other of what you have shown, or something, something that, that kind of gives a travel way?
There's a number of different alternatives for how to access it. We, we can say that there will be access, one way or the other, there will be. Which one exactly?
Right.
Is going to be something that has to be determined.
I think the example is, what if, what if you ended up putting your access road between two houses that were there? We wouldn't have known of that impact while we're here, giving you that approval. And, I mean, that would be a major impact, if that, if we didn't have, you know, if that happened, and we didn't know it was going to.
There are no homes there yet.
Right.
Walk today, that's there, and it's already a gravel driveway to maintain the drainage system for the road, or, you know, for access to get to the drainage pond, for maintenance, if it's ever needed.
I mean, it makes all kinds of sense to put it along that boundary line. I understand that completely, because people are going to want to recreate along that, right? Yeah. And that right-of-way does not have houses along it presently?
Presently. Yeah, it's part of the open land right now. Either way, the access will be from that road, Village Corner Road, whether it's here or here.
Would you have to get permission from the association to do that?
Not if we're using the existing right-of-way. So, that's what I mean, there will be access one way or the other, either over the existing right-of-way or over a new right-of-way at a more ideal location, or what we think was going to be a more ideal location, that works better for everybody. That's the hope, but if not, there is an existing right-of-way that can be used.
I, I understand it now. So, assuming an approval, it's either going to go on the old right-of-way or very close to where you have it drawn?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think there's a, I mean, there's a non-zero chance technically, but I don't think there's any other location being contemplated for a third alternative.
Well, if we, you know, if we end up approving this, it's going to be based on those two, so you'd have to come back.
That's fair enough.
So, I see, are those poles along there? And what did, what did I hear on the site walk about no poles?
So, there was, there was a comment about a portion of that, of those poles, the power going underground, following this.
Right. But you are showing some poles along Village Corner Road. Are there, they're existing? It's not a town road? Oh.
Those are existing poles that are there now. The engineer was just representing what's there, and then, representing, again, a conceptual plan that we would like to, you know, follow, depending on how we get through it. So. If, could I jump back in?
Yes.
To what we've done? So, just, I just wanted the board to understand what specifically we've done to get to this point, okay? So, we have the site control, we have, I think, discussed through the different access options that the board can entertain as we go through the rest of the application. We have had the property surveyed for wetlands, and all of the panels and the racking is going to be outside of the 100-foot setback of where we have found, we have identified the wetlands on the property, which is the green area. We have done, submitted for Habitat with the state, and there came back as no hits that we had to do any additional work with the fish and wildlife. We did submit for the archaeological hits, the, it did come back with an area of sensitivity, so we just finished our Phase 1 report for the test digging and making sure there was no other concerns, and that came back clean, and that's been submitted to the state as of this morning. We have, tomorrow, we are doing some additional deep test pits for where the detention basin is, is proposed, again, in this conceptual. So, when we get to the point we can submit to the state for the alteration of terrain, we'll have that deep test pit analysis that we need. One of the important things to this project, other than tonight, is we had submitted to the New Hampshire Electric Co-op to do their engineering of this facility connecting to those specific lines, and what the impact is. So, it's called an impact study. That study was supposed to be done a couple weeks ago. Co-op is a little behind, or they haven't really given me a reason why it hasn't been delivered on the date it was supposed to, but it is forthcoming. Because of this area is, and New Hampshire Electric Co-op intertwined with Eversource in their infrastructure, that this will also be reviewed by Eversource. So, we'll have an impact study with the Co-op, we'll have a similar, maybe not as involved, study or review by Eversource to make sure that that project can go on those lines, and if we have to do any upgrades, it's borne by the project, there's no ratepayer costs that you, as ratepayers, would have to pay for these costs, it's all borne by us.
So, how far would you have to go out?
Just to the corner of, up at the top of Village Corner, is where the power is.
Okay.
Yep. So, that study, we expect to come back hopefully any day. That, that's a very, that's a big one for us, because we had another project just recently that got hit with a $2 million upgrade, and we have to pay for all those costs, and the project may likely not be able to afford that, so we may have to terminate that project or come up with a different solution. So, we have to get that information and make sure that that's a, that's a fatal flaw, as tonight is as well for us. So, the survey work is complete. The wetlands are complete. Oh, we also completed the Phase 1 ESA for environmental, and there was no wrecks that were identified, so the property has a clean environmental bill of health, and depending what happens this evening, we would be prepared to submit in two days to the planning board's technical review session, which we understand is like a, kind of an initial step we have to go through for the different agency heads to kind of review and provide feedback for, so we can then come for a formal public hearing. So, that, that's where we are in the process. I just, and, oh, last, sorry, last one. We have been discussing what they call a payment in lieu of tax with the assessor's office, and it's, it's preparing to go in front of the Board of Selectmen for an approval of how the panels will be taxed. So, that's also, there's a state statute that we're following on that, so that's being, been reviewed. I've been working for the last couple of months with the assessor to kind of put the numbers together, so that way he can go, he can go in front of the Board of Selectmen with that final step as well. So, that was what I was trying to finish up earlier.
Have you talked formally or informally with the Conservation Commission?
No.
Have you had an EDC meeting?
No. What would be your concerns on the EDC meeting? Like, could you give me some education on that? Yeah, I appreciate that question, and we usually have a packet that we bring to the planning board, may, I think for this, might have been appropriate tonight, but I apologize, I didn't have it prepared, but one of the key details is using what type of fencing. So, on a project like this, there's certain electric code requirements we have to meet, so we have to be 15 feet from the edge of the panels, and we have to have a seven-foot fence. We have the luxury of utilizing a seven-foot knot-wire fence, like a habitat-friendly fence that you might see on the highways and stuff, which is typically what we would utilize for a project in a more rural place like this. And also, we'll be utilizing the, the animals from the Bivards Farm to maintain all of the grass underneath the panels, so there will be a dual agrivoltaic, is the term we use. So, instead of going out there with lawn mowers, we're going to have four-legged lawn mowers out there munching away, to keep the grass down.
So, the whole, the whole area that's going to have the arrays is going to be fenced in?
Correct, has to be by, by code, by electric code.
And is it going to be safe from people going in? Is it going to be gated?
Yep, it definitely is going to be gated. You know, the old adage of a fence only keeps an honest person honest is true, you know, it's a seven-foot fence, a six-year-old could climb over one. We hope they don't, but that's part of the purpose of being rural, we do have the whole property being monitored remotely, so all of the equipment is monitored, so if somebody went out there and decided to clip wires and start, you know, taking copper from, from the grounding, we would get a notice that the project was being messed with, and that's where we would look to the local services to keep it. If it became an ongoing issue for some reason, then there's always the opportunity to put, you know, cameras out there.
Is there some sort of failsafe thing if somebody were to get in there, that it just shuts off?
No. But they would have to go, everything is in rigid conduit, so they would have to go in with a saw and try to like cut into the wires, and, you know, that would be a problem. If, if the system had any type of impact from the electrical lines, say there's a power outage upstream, like a tree fell on a line, you know, up the street, the system would shut down. If it doesn't recognize power coming in, the system does automatically shut down. But if somebody goes over a fence, there isn't a way to shut off the power if somebody goes over a fence.
Where would you put a gate to restrict access? Because we were talking to Kevin tonight, he walks in there with his dog and everything.
Right.
You're going to stop people right up at the very beginning, or you're going to stop it at the, at the beginning of the red?
So, yeah, typically, right in here, and I think that you're concerned and then to be a lot of somebody that uses this, you know, walking trail, after we leave, like that's what I recognize in walking, I've known that bringing it over here gets rid of that walking trail. I don't think that would take that time to be, well, you're going to be up here later in life, but my, this, definitely, you'd be absolutely sure. If it became an issue, people were riding down there, and, you know, and really find if there's anything, you know, stuff going on out there, then we might have to address it quickly. But right now, we don't.
And that property would only be visited probably twice a year? So, after the construction is complete, I'm, I like to use this joke, but I'm going to use it not tongue-in-cheek, but like, I bet Amazon goes up and down that street more in a day than we will go up and down in a year, because we only have to maintain it, to have the electricians go out and check the system, and we've got the four-legged friends that are going to be taking care of the maintenance for us, so we don't have to go out there with a mower.
Well, there's going to be a break in the gate somewhere to let those animals in, so.
Yep, on the other side. Yep.
So, I, one, another question?
Please.
Where, where the pink is, and where the green is, that will pretty much fully develop that parcel that she owns? In other words, nothing more is going to happen there other than this?
Correct, and, and the grazing and the animals. So, she, the animals are out there still to, to this day, and then they'll be out there after maintaining the grass for us. So, but no, there'll be no additional disturbance outside of what you saw, the open fields today.
I mean, technically, there's, is there already, there's already a house on this parcel? Or is there a barn or something down off North Wakefield Road?
I think there is.
That's a sheep shed, okay.
A horse ring.
A horse ring, a sheep shed and a horse ring.
Horse run in.
Run in, okay.
Question about safety, you said everything is in hard conduit, all the way up to each, each panel, right? All 12,000 panels have a conduit box, I guess, and connected to conduit?
Almost.
And so forth?
So, from, if I may.
So, from down around here, the corner where that, uh, panel is, so everything from there over to a transformer, and then underground to inside the whole footprint underground, and these projects are set up with multiple small subsections of the array, and small inverters, or they're constantly visiting, like, weigh forty to fifty pounds, might manage about a hundred kilowatts of, you know, five.
Power.
And those units are buried, or they, those are above ground?
Okay.
That are attached to the edge of the rack, is what it was, you know, strategic location within the array, those are attached to the rack and itself. So, up until, through the inverter from back here, all of this underground stuff up in the inverter, okay? And then from the inverter, those ones go, they connect to panels up under you, and those are the only wires that are, they're sealed, but they're intended to wire the panel.
So, the, the?
They're real voltage, you're certain of that, so that's why I thought it would be just.
Okay, so, so what are the different voltages in it, coming out of the panel? What's the voltage at that point?
Um, I don't know, it's going to be like the whole part of it, but each of the inverters are pretty much like a lot of these. Will you please use the microphone?
Sorry. So, yeah, so about, about 300 panels per inverter, goes up into the 125, 150 kilowatt inverter, and then those all string together to get to the full five-megawatt size that goes back to the service and into the transformer.
About 340 watts a panel, something like?
535 now.
Ooh, they're up there.
Yeah, they've come up a lot. So, the footprint has gotten a little bit bigger, but they haven't gone beyond what is, there are like massive panels now, but it takes three or four people to mount them, so the 500 range is enough for like a couple people to physically handle them, so your labor costs don't go up, keeps everything kind of in a good system.
So, I guess what I was trying to get to is it, is it's, is there any safety issues? If, if a little six-year-old kid scales a fence and gets in there, is, is he at risk if, if he grabs something, is it tamper?
No, definitely not.
All this wiring is a tamper-proof, I guess, is the question?
Unless he came in with like some clip, you know, some wire clippers?
He needs some equipment.
Yeah, he, definitely. I mean, yeah, you'd have to like, you know, you couldn't even chew into this.
All right.
Even if he was teething at six.
It's not vandal-proof. You would only do that once.
Only once, only once.
But so, it's, it's, it's not vandal-proof per se, but it's, it's?
Not necessarily, I mean?
It's not going to be a hazard to anybody who walks in there.
Absolutely not.
Gets in there somehow.
There's no, there's no safety of being inside, being near it, if somebody decided to get curious. We have had, we have, I did a project near a housing facility, and some kids went out there and got curious and started whipping rocks at the panels. So, they broke some panels, and we had to go replace them, and they got in trouble. But, yes, to go inside, to walk around the perimeter, again, it is private property, but if somebody got curious and kind of went over and jumped out the fence and got curious, there wouldn't be a, there wouldn't be?
No safety issue.
Safety wouldn't be at risk of just walking around it.
Can I ask a question about the after, after construction?
Mm-hmm.
Understanding that this is really a major construction project as to the alteration of the terrain to make everything work there. So, after?
Certainly.
Well, it's almost 20 acres.
Alex, maybe, but please.
It's not a household, this is an industry, this is a commercial operation, and you're an industry, and so it's a, to me, it's a big project. My question is, after, if it's approved and cited, what sorts of things do you have to do to maintain not the apparatus, but the ground underneath these mounts? Do trees grow up? Do you have to mow it? Do you just let it go wild? I mean, there's a, there's a hayfield there now, except for, in the middle of it, there's a, what do they call it? The stump row thing?
Right.
That's going to be removed. So, basically, it's going to be barren of whatever is there now and changed, so what, you don't have to do a thing? What do you put down to make nothing grow again?
So, if I may, the reason why I respectfully disagree with your statement about it being a big disruption of the property is because we're not proposing to adjust anything on that field. The posts that go in the ground is a fence post, it's a metal fence post, so we're not going in and stripping the land and changing the terrain, as you saw, the terrain is almost perfectly flat. So, what happens is you go on, the, the grass would be maintained as it is now, so when we come in to start construction, a fence, basically a fence post machine would come in and set the posts in a perfectly straight?
Is that like a screw-in?
In this environment, it will be a pile-driven system, it's just like, they, some of them can have an earth screw, and this one, because it's, the soils are so sandy there, probably would just be just a, it just pushes it right down into the, so we would not be disturbing the land underneath it, it would stay as-is. We don't want to create more disturbance, because that, the alteration of terrain, people don't allow us to disturb more than, open up more than five acres at a time anyways. So, we maintain that, any, any disruption to this existing vegetation during construction obviously has to be reseeded, but it's very minimal, because the equipment that's used is turf, typically turf-friendly, skid steers and equipment that can go across this property without tearing it up. After the posts are put in the ground, everything else is done by labor, other than taking the pallets of panels and putting them strategically out in the field, and then manually, the racking and the panels are put onto the, on the system, okay? So, I don't have the exact number right now, but the actual disturbance outside of the detention basin, and some of the conduit runs that will, we will have to trench down and get underground, I think each, each fence post is like, like a half a square foot each. And there's a lot of them here, but I think, if, I've done the counts before on a megawatt, I think it's like, barely an acre of disturbance to the ground, and it's just pile-driving a post into it. So, we will have limited disturbance of the existing property, and to answer your question about what happens after, so we will, as part of the planning board process, in every town we work in, we will have a decommissioning bond, or some form of surety, and a decommissioning plan, that will be reviewed by the planning department. They're very extensive, they're very detailed, they have a cost breakdown of what all these items cost, there's a very conservative scrap cost of what steel is worth today, and how much, what the tonnage is of that, to come up with a number that will be in front of the planning board to, to decide or make it a condition of an approval, to make sure that there's always a bond in place, so if the solar industry disappears, and none of us are here in 10 years from now, these folks aren't left with a pile, a pile of bones to deal with. There is a financial mechanism to remove those, and the only thing that's going to be, everything's going to be taken out of the ground, and all the posts are coming up, and that's going to be a hayfield in 20 years.
Is there going to be a drainage program planned?
Yep, yep, that's, alteration of terrain will take care of that.
And?
That's what the test pits tomorrow are for.
Because I'm thinking, we, we were just previously talking about pervious and impervious soils, I'm, I'm just picturing a thousand pieces of glass across that field.
But it's not, it's not, it's not a flat surface with no break, so every panel has about a half an inch break around them, so it's not, the panels themselves are obviously don't let any water through them, but it's not just a sheet of glass for 25 acres. And again, we're utilizing existing ground cover, the alteration of terrain has specific solar guidance, that has not been put into a full rulemaking, but they, we've been following the AOT guidance for, I think, almost three years now.
So, what, what's the surface of, of one of these arrays?
About three by five, three and a half by five and a half feet.
For one array?
One panel. Array, let me just, to be clear, an array is the whole, that's an array. A panel is the individual panels, just to be clear.
Three to five feet?
Mm-hmm, three by five feet.
Three by five?
Roughly. So, again, the planning department has their, obviously, job to review it from a planning perspective. The state has their job to review it from a stormwater perspective, as well as all the habitat and archaeological steps that we've gone through, so, and then the utility has a job to make sure that it's safe for everybody upstream and downstream on those lines. So, we're doing all that in parallel. If anywhere along the way that we're not able to move forward the project, that can be a fatal flaw. Like I said, we got a $2 million upgrade cost on another project, after going through full ZB approval, full planning board approval, and then the utility comes and tell, and a pilot approval with the Board of Suckman, and then we find out that's $2 million to upgrade the lines. So, that is the risk that we take, but we can't start the race, so to speak, unless we, you know, have a board like yours to tell us if we can move forward.
Yep.
So, that is our present?
Let's wait for Chuck to come back.
Yeah, so that's our presentation, so happy to answer questions from the board, I mean, other from the board or from the public, and then?
Can we take a, can we take a five-minute break?
Okay, and then Jeff can take you through the application.
I'm losing people right and left here.
I'm losing my voice.
Bring the meeting back into order after our break.
I had a new microphone.
We're gonna, we're gonna hear the five variance criteria, and then we're going to ask for any public input, and go from there.
Five criteria.
Sure, so once again, my name is Jeffrey Christensen, I represent the applicant here. There's a written application that addresses all five of the different criteria, specifically for the sake of everybody's time, to try to keep things brief, I'm just going to hit the highlights rather than go through them all exhaustively. As you've seen, and as there's been some discussion, this property is currently undeveloped, it's bisected by the James Young Brook, it's currently hayfield pasture land, soil quality even for that use is not great, so there's a lot of unique characteristics of this property that make it very suitable for solar, but not suitable for much else. Unfortunately, because of Section 175-125, solar arrays are not a permitted use in this district, they're actually not a permitted use in any district in Wolfboro. So, that's what we need the variance from to allow this particular use. As you can see from the plan that's up here, the surrounding area is primarily wooded, undeveloped, there's a development sort of nearby, but there's a lot of buffer land in between it. This project is going to be visually screened, it shouldn't be visible to really anybody, there's not going to be any effect on the essential character of the neighborhood. Similarly, none of the harms that a zoning ordinance is typically designed to prevent, to protect neighbors and the public from, are really present with this use. A solar array just kind of sits there quietly producing clean energy, there's not any noise concerns, there's no pollution concerns, we've already been over, there's no health or safety risks, there's no real impact on traffic or congestion or anything like that, there's no overcrowding of population, there's no overcrowding of the land, this is going to fully comply with all of the setbacks, there's really no downsides to this use. Certainly, there's fewer impacts, fewer externalities than other uses which are permitted in the district. The best example of this for this property, this is a residential agricultural district, agricultural uses are permitted. If there were a large barn or several large barns on this property, you could put solar arrays on the roof, and as an accessory use, that would be permitted, you wouldn't need a variance. This is basically doing the same thing, just without that underlying barn, so there's going to be less impact than there would be if you had a barn plus a solar farm. Having just the solar farm itself is going to be less of a burden to the area. Overall, this is a reasonable use of this land, it'll provide clean energy for the surrounding community, reduce energy. there's no health or safety risks. There's no real impact on traffic or congestion or anything like that. There's no overcrowding of population. There's no overcrowding of the land. This is gonna fully comply with all of the setbacks. There's really no downsides to this use. Certainly, there's fewer impacts, fewer externalities than other uses which are permitted in the district. The best example of this for this property-- this is a residential agricultural district-- agricultural uses are permitted. If there were a large barn or several large barns on this property, you could put solar arrays on the roof. And as an accessory use, that would be permitted. You wouldn't need a variance. This is basically doing the same thing just without that underlying barn. So there's going to be less impact than there would be if you had a barn plus a solar farm. Having just the solar farm itself is gonna be less of a burden to the area. Overall, this is a reasonable use of this land. It'll provide clean energy for the surrounding community, reduce energy costs, increase the town's tax base. This property, given its unique conditions, is uniquely suited to solar array. It's already cleared. It's already flat. You don't have to do a lot of working with the land to get it there. You don't have to cut down mature trees the way you might somewhere else. This is a really good spot for this. And Section 125.1, the general purposes of Wolfboro zoning ordinance, expressly recognizes that solar is an important thing to have in the town. The quote is exactly that the zoning ordinance is intended to, quote, "encourage the installation and use of solar, wind, and other renewable energy systems." State law also, RSA 672.1, Roman numeral 3-a, also recognizes that solar is an important and reasonable use and prohibits towns from unreasonably limiting them by zoning power. So town, local, state law both recognize that solar is an important and reasonable use. This is a good property for it. The zoning ordinance, by not permitting solar, does create a hardship for the applicant by preventing that reasonable use. There is no harm to any of the abutters, any members of the general public granting the variance. There's no reason to prohibit this use. And therefore, we are asking the board to grant this variance today. Happy to take any questions from the board.
Well, typically, we go through the one through five.
Mm-hmm. I'm happy to do that if you would like to. I was trying to save everybody some time.
I guess--
We have to.
We have to, but I gotta hear from the public first. And I have certainly some questions.
Please.
But I would rather hear from the public--
Okay.
Before I start all my questions.
Okay, I'm happy to sit down, let the public speak, and then come back and answer questions afterwards.
Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this project?
Hi, Tony Fallon, 49th Center, Wolfboro. I'm here to speak in favor of it. I guess my question is, I'm not sure why it is here for a variance since it's a solar farm. And it seems to me, you know, farming is permitted. So I'm not sure why it's not an accessory use or really a farming operation since they currently have sheep and they're gonna keep having sheep grazing on this field, so. But I am in favor of it.
Thank you. Anybody else in favor?
I'm Edie Damaris from Wolfboro. And I would just like to speak very briefly in favor. I believe that we should all be moving away from fossil fuels to have a cleaner environment. The people in Wolfboro really value our community. We value our clean water, the clean air. And I think that this is an ideal opportunity to move into some solar, some non-fossil fuel electric generation. I'd like to see a lot more of it, and I think we should encourage it. And it discourages me to hear that it is in our ordinances that solar is not permitted. And I think that in the right place, if it doesn't interfere with the abutters, that it is something we should be advocating for and not prohibiting.
I'd just like to clarify. The ordinance doesn't permit a commercial operation of solar in a residential agricultural zone. The ordinance does have provisions for residential solar in residential zones for which we do have existing solar panels on residential homes.
I'm aware-- I'm aware of that, having it in on our homes. And I'm sorry, I wasn't-- didn't know this specifically, how our ordinance is worded. But I think that we should be open to commercial if it's in the right place. Thank you.
Anybody else in favor? Yes.
Hi, I'm Laureen Strohke. And I own Novu Farm. I'm in the agricultural district. I've known Amanda for many years. She's a very strong supporter of agriculture. We serve on the Wolfboro Ag Commission. Well, no, we don't serve. I serve on the Ag Commission, but we serve on Farm Bureau in Carroll County together. My farm is in the Ag District and it butts up to her land. I can't see anything from my farm. I can't see her property. My son lives in Calden Farm. And from his house, I can't see any of the-- her property. So I don't think that should bother anyone. Because she can't use this area as a hayfield, I think that as a passive use for renewable energy and letting her sheep graze on this land, it's a good use for this land. And she is keeping it in agriculture. And we do want to see that in Wolfboro. We want to keep agriculture in Wolfboro. Thank you.
Can you tell me-- I have a question for you. Come back. Has there been any discussion on the county basis or in any of the other agricultural groups as to whether creating energy from solar is actually agriculture?
Well, I know out west, there's a lot of farming-- they call it farming under the grid. They are using their open land to put solar panels. And then they fence it in and they put their sheep on it or their cows graze. So I'm looking into putting solar panels on my barn roof as well.
Mm-hmm.
So it's an up-and-coming thing. It's renewable energy, and it's helping the farmers too.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to-- yes.
I don't know how much I can say-- I'm Katie Paternell from Wolfboro. I don't know how much I can say about whether or not solar is actually agriculture or not. However, I know that it costs an exorbitant amount of money to farm. And if we can help our local farmers in any way by offsetting the cost of maintaining their land and their property, by giving them a way to earn some money by leasing their property, then we should probably support our farmer-- local farmers in any way we can.
Thank you. Any other in favors? Any opposes? Yes, sir.
Evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Kevin Sansenbacher. I live on Village Corner Road. And I'm also the president of the-- or the Calden Farm Homeowners Association. I hate to say we're opposed to this particular variance, but we do have some concerns. And I want to thank you for your diligence. I think you've kind of captured many of our concerns in the questions you've already asked. But I would like to go on the record as we are very concerned about what's gonna happen to our open space and conservation area. But it is something we feel is a very important selling aspect of our community. And it's also a very important recreation facility, especially for myself, as I pointed out during the walkthrough today. You know, I walk my dog out that trail every day, and I'm concerned about what's gonna happen there. We're also concerned about how it's going to-- the impact of the lines coming into our community. You know, if this is approved, we would like to make sure that when it reaches that-- that right-of-way that we've talked about, that it maybe can go underground rather than tie with poles and lines right through our community, especially when those two properties that are supposed to go through are supposed to be-- or there's several properties are supposed to be developed. A lot of questions about safety. One question that did not come up tonight is what about fire risk? Especially if it's going to be close to those woods there that immediately abut our community over, you know, an area of space that is, you know, probably at least a half mile. But, you know, there is some danger from these solar panels catching fire and what's gonna be done to mitigate that danger from the construction point of view besides just fencing. And I heard them talk about 100-foot barrier. I'm not sure if that's adequate enough to prevent fire from spreading from the panels. So those are largely our concerns. In addition, you know, what's gonna happen to our road during construction? Is it gonna be damaged? It is right now a private road, although it is under bond to go public once all the construction is done in the community and the road is completed to standards that are acceptable by the town. So that's the plan that'll eventually become a town road. But we are concerned about the damage while construction. So although, you know, you asked about opposition, we are not opposed, but we do have a lot of concerns in our community.
So your concern about the road during construction would be something you'd bring up with the planning board and make sure that they put in conditions and measures to repair or--
Yes, we do realize that many of our concerns are as well for the planning board, probably more consistently appropriate for the planning board. But we do want to go on the record and for you to understand that we do have--
Appreciate it, thank you.
--concerns from your point of view as well. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak in concern or opposition to the project? Would you like to rebut anything that you have heard?
Yeah, I can address a couple of the questions that were raised. The first that's easy to address-- well, somewhat easy to address is the question of is solar power actually an agricultural use? The quick and easy answer is that hasn't been decided in New Hampshire yet. There are a lot of courts, a lot of towns, a lot of states outside of New Hampshire that are considering an agricultural use. Basically, it's the same thing as a greenhouse. You're using the sun's energy to produce something, whether it be flowers or electricity. There are a lot of people that are considering it agricultural in that category. Specifically for this property, it is benefiting the agricultural use. There are a lot of studies showing that the solar array and the impact of having a solar array on the grass underneath, that the grass actually grows stronger. And the sheep who are grazing under solar arrays, because of the conditions of the grass underneath, they are healthier, more full-bodied. So it does support the agricultural indirectly as well. I'm gonna let Andrew talk a little bit more about some of the details of some of the questions that were raised about utilities and all of that. But I can say, because we've dealt with this in other towns, that fire risk is not really a big concern with these sort of developments. Primarily glass and metal. If you had, for example, a solar panel on a house, the real risk that you're gonna have of something catching fire is from the house, not from the solar panel. In this case, there is no house underneath them to catch fire. You're gonna have just the land itself, the metal poles, the glass solar arrays. There's not a lot of flammable material in there that's gonna spontaneously combust. I'll let Andrew talk a little bit more about that, and then I'll be back if you have questions for me.
Yeah, as far as the fire concern, it's absolutely a fair concern. And we have heard it many times from different communities that we've worked in. To my knowledge-- I'm gonna go out on a limb here-- more than probably 95% of all fires that were associated with a solar array were on a building. And there's concern about the fact that the fire is not starting from the panels almost every single situation. And we have a couple of different communities we've worked in where this has come up. It was a major concern in one community. Our landowner is a fire department. He works at the abutting town's fire department. And his comment about it was, "We wait till EverSource or Co-op, in this case, shows up and make sure the power's off before we fight any fire with any electrical issues, no matter what type of situation there is." He said also, "The concern is more about what's inside your home that's toxic or inside a commercial building that's toxic than what is related to the solar panels." And finally, speaking to a fire chief, asking for his position at the planning board, his answer to me was, "We're here to protect your solar array. If the house down the street catches on fire and goes into the woods, or if there was, you know, a forest fire, or if there was a brush fire inside your fence line and the fire was going out towards the neighbor's house, it's our job to protect the neighbor's homes." That's with a big asterisk that they're not gonna do any of that until the utility shows up and makes sure that there's no power going into that field. So this is a little bit of feedback on that. Last thing I'll say is that there are quite a few states that are now actually incentivizing solar projects within agricultural environments. And they have a term, a little cheeky, but it's called agrilvotaic is the term, where there is a mixed use. And there's a lot of it happening all across the country. There are habitat situations where we're putting in different types of-- like butterfly habitats. So it'll bring in different habitats around the panels. So this is absolutely-- the industry and our country is recognizing that these pieces of land like this can be used for two different reasons. And that's what we started from day one with. That's what we worked with the Bavards on to make sure that-- first thing they said is, "Can we make sure we use the animals to keep the grass down?" The answer was absolutely 100% yes. So we're doing our best to make sure it's a dual use and not taking away from what they've been doing for-- how many years?
70.
Okay. 72 years of those. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to clear up, if I could, a misconception when they say solar farm. Under New Hampshire statute 2134a, farm, agriculture, and farming, there is no provision under the definition for a solar farm. What this is, is a commercial solar entity, foreign industry that creates renewable energy. It's not-- it's not-- it's not that illusion of a solar farm. It is not a solar farm. That definition does not come into play under state statute. Now, there is another provision, and that is 2134a. There is another provision, 67417, that's the regulatory powers of local land use boards. And it does have mention of-- Wolfboro doesn't prohibit this. And you've given that impression, and I don't want the public to think that's the case. What we do is encourage and provide for residential solar. We have a energy committee that is very active and working to try and find ways for our municipal buildings to have solar solutions. We have a commercial zone. We have an industrial zone. That's where these big operations should go and would fit in with the zoning within Wolfboro. The state law says to encourage, but it doesn't mandate it. And I don't want that impression implied.
Thank you. May I respond?
Because you have in your five criteria-- and I don't remember which one-- but you say, "We discourage it." We don't discourage it.
Fair enough. So a couple of good points to bring to your attention as relates to an energy committee. That's probably doing great work. I don't follow your energy committee, so I can't speak to it. One thing that you may want to-- may not understand is that you may be encouraging it, which I believe you are. But the reality is that 80% of the roofs-- residential roofs in the country cannot support solar. Wrong roof angle, a big pine tree over the top of the house.
I need the mic-- you need the microphone.
I know, little mic, because the big one's out of batteries.
Is that any better?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll start over. So your energy committee is probably doing a wonderful job, as you stated, encouraging the use of renewable energy around your community. No question at all, in my mind, that that's taking place. But there's a really important fact that you're missing, which is that 80% of the roofs in the United States cannot support solar for multiple reasons. They could be pointing north, which is the wrong direction. They could be-- have a big pine tree over their house shading all the panels. You-- not you specifically-- you may not like the look of solar panels on your roof.[1738.25] You, not you specifically, you may not like the look of solar panels on your roof. So while an energy committee is doing their job to encourage, and the commercial areas of your town, to your point, may make, probably make a lot of sense to have solar there, you can't always put the solar there, for the reasons I stated on the residential level apply to the commercial level as well. And on top of that, your municipal light and power may not even allow it, because municipal light and powers are very restrictive on renewable energy sometimes. And again, I don't know your specific municipal light and power, but I've worked with a lot of them around New England, and they're the least friendly utilities to work with to encourage solar, because you're taking business away from them. So, the other thing I might suggest is that, and this is not to beat up on the farmers by any means, but their operation is a commercial operation. They're selling their product for commercial purposes. So I would wonder why, and I will speak to the fact that, while there may not be, and I think Jeff was speaking to like the larger legal environment, which is there may not be like a case law that he can point to that says, this was challenged. But I can tell you personally, from my experience, that we use the fact that a solar farm, or solar garden, as we call it, and hence our name, has received variances for that as our argument in other communities. So, hasn't been in case law, but I can point to a few towns where we use that to get, go to the zoning board to make sure our project could move forward. So, I would just bring those to your attention. It's not to say what you're saying is incorrect, or what I'm saying is correct or incorrect. I just wanted you to have some facts to go along with why, again, this location has a very good use. They're operating a commercial farm to grow livestock and other things that they can sell to the public. Our job is to use the sun and co-mingle it with this facility where they're growing, where they're using it as a farm, to then be able to sell it to a town, to help lower the electric bills, which you're playing through the nose right now on. And it's not going to get any better. So we can either keep looking overseas, or we can keep looking in other places to get power, and natural gas prices are not going to come down enough, and wind, offshore wind is not coming for at least seven to 10 years. So we need to do our part. And we're looking for your board, this board, to recognize that, as this isn't opening up the floodgates for, to see solar facilities at every corner of your neighborhood, because I can promise you, policy and boards do not slow down the growth of this industry. The infrastructure is what's slowing down this industry. The infrastructure that we have has limitations. And we're going through the process to ensure that those limitations are to protect the public. So there won't be a situation where you go to every single corner in this beautiful community you live in and see solar farms everywhere. Hence the reason we're using this location. It's out of sight, it's not in your backyard, and we're doing our best to do everything we can to respect the neighbors, the abutters, and make sure that we preserve the use of this land for the future.
Let me ask a question. Where is this energy being sold? Are we going to take the benefit of that in Wolfboro?
You can't. You're municipal light and power. You don't have that luxury.
So, we're going to have 50 acres?
25.
Well, 50 acres is the parcel.
Yep, but 25 acres of use.
And some of it's wet, so it can't be used. But we're going to have a chunk of land in our agricultural district, used for solar purposes.
Harvesting the sun.
And Wolfboro doesn't get the benefit of the power.
That's not true. Your tax.
They're going to get a tax benefit.
The tax benefit's going to be substantial.
Well, that's to the benefit of the applicant.
No, that's to the benefit of.
Tax incentive is benefit to the applicant.
Nope, 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 nope.
Because it is. They don't get taxed at full value.
It's a tax payment to the town.
They don't get taxed at full value.
There's a much higher value of the taxation on this property after the solar farm is built.
I made my point. Wolfboro's not getting the power.
That's your opinion.
Could we have that discussion, can we have it on the record at the stand, please?
What Amanda was saying is that, it depends on how the power is sold to the community. So, if New Hampshire Electric Co-op comes to the table and says, we would love to buy all your power, we haven't had that discussion with them, because we don't even know if we're going to have a project after tonight. But when we get through the planning process is when the conversation about how and where the power is going to be sold. I can promise you one thing, we're not selling this power to Massachusetts. We're not selling this power to Connecticut, like all the big solar farms you've heard about in New Hampshire that are massive, that are taking away from the local area and selling the power somewhere south. We're not doing that. So depending on how we can sell the power, under the community power initiative I shared with you, maybe a blend, to Amanda's point, maybe we do one megawatt that can be sold to anybody in Co-op territory. We have that luxury to do that if we want to. Or if the Co-op says, hey, we want to, they just own a two megawatt project down the street, we want, we'd love to buy your power, because we're paying through the nose for power. Can we contract with you for the power? And then everybody that's in Wolfboro that gets their power from Co-op would then benefit. So there is that option.
Let me say, we get, I'm sure my other partners here and the board get these flyers from other electric companies about they've got the best rate. Just let me refresh the public. Wolfboro has a very fine competitive rate on our electric rates, and we have, it's a five-year contract, and we just renewed it. So for five years, we're not interested in your power.
Perfect. We're not interested in selling it, because we understand that most municipal light powers get their power, they don't have overhead.
Not helping.
An investor, what's that?
Nothing.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. Investor-owned utilities have a lot of overhead and charge for power at a very high number. Municipal light and powers traditionally always have the lowest rates. So it's good for most of Wolfboro. But the other half of, part of Wolfboro that's on Co-op, their electric rates just went up, I believe, 60% recently. And they're going to keep going up every six months. You have the luxury of locking in for five years. Everybody on Co-op gets the luxury of their prices for power changing every six months. And that's a problem.
Well, you know.
And that's a problem.
You're here selling your company, and I'm really more interested in the five criteria. Could you go through the five criteria one at a time, please?
Certainly.
From your application.
To be clear.
Just read it in the order of your application.
Sure. I can certainly read.
Do you want him to read it verbatim, or hit each one with a sentence of the most important part of it?
Either way, verbatim or?
Okay. I think for the sake of everybody's time, I'm not going to read it verbatim. There's a lot of legal discussion about the standard in there that I think the board's probably familiar with. And again, if I'm not speaking clearly into the microphone, please stop me. I'll try to do it, but I'm also dealing with paper in front of me. So the first question is the, in the order of the town's application, the public interest. So there's a number of aspects of public interest. The first is, is there a public health, safety, welfare risk? There really isn't in this case. We've talked about all of the different health and safety concerns, or lack thereof. If anything, there is a public health, safety, welfare benefit by producing clean renewable energy, reducing the dependency on fossil fuels, et cetera, that will help the area regardless of whether or not you're actually participating in the electricity generation directly. Other concerns of health, public welfare, traffic, noise, pollution, they don't exist here. A solar farm is a passive use of a property, like a greenhouse, like any other use that is not going to be requiring somebody driving there every day. There's not going to be delivery trucks going in and out. There's not going to be residents going in and out. This is going to be a very passive, low-intensity use. And as we've discussed before, when I was just hitting the highlights, the local ordinance recognizes that solar is important to encourage in the town. The state law also recognizes that solar is important to encourage throughout the state and should not be unreasonably restricted by zoning. That's the language the state statute uses. That's not how I'm choosing to phrase it. The second question is the spirit of the ordinance. The spirit of the ordinance standard, that element is been recognized and established by New Hampshire Supreme Court to be related to the public interest. So there's not a lot of overlap, but, or there's not a lot that doesn't overlap here, so I'm going to fly through this one pretty quickly. But again, the biggest one here is the spirit of the ordinance. Section 175-1 of the ordinance expressly recognizes that encouraging the installation and use of solar is important, and more generally, allowing the property to be put to its highest and best use of allowing for grazing and production of clean energy, as opposed to just grazing alone. This is a property that is very well suited for it. Highest and best use of the property is really in keeping with what zoning ordinances are designed for. There was a question about the agricultural, whether this is or is not agricultural. As Ryan recognized, and I agree with you, this isn't defined under the state law, under the zoning ordinance, as an agricultural use. That's why we've brought this variance. But it is very similar to a lot of agricultural uses, like a greenhouse. And that's why we do think it is suited for this property.
Can I speak to you on that one?
On this specific element? Absolutely.
Yeah, on two.
Sure.
You talk about the highest and best use.
Yep.
There was some mention, maybe it's further along, that the hay fields were not very productive.
Yes.
So can you tell us how many acres that she's been haying, and why it is or has not been productive? I mean, not just because of the soil, either, how many bales of hay they get off of that property?
I don't have that information in front of me. The soil quality there is not great, and that was probably in sort of the general background section of the application, which I haven't been reading from. But it is used for hay right now. It's not the best property for hay. It is what it is. The point is that because it is a hayfield, it is cleared, it does make it suitable for zoning. And I can get into this a little bit when we get to the hardship element. The question is not, is there any other use that you could possibly put this land towards, but is this use reasonable, and are the harms that a zoning ordinance trying to prevent going to be created by this use? So, the exact level of how productive the hay bales are, or the hayfield is, isn't something we really looked into for this application.
But it has been a viable use for years.
That's what it's been used for, for quite some time, yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So, the next element is the substantial justice element. This is the balancing act element, if you're familiar with it. What are the harms and losses to the applicant by denying the application? What does the public stand to gain by denying the application? In this case, there's significant harm to the applicant, just depriving them of a use of the property that's beneficial, desirable, both for the applicant, the landowner, but also the general public by producing clean energy. That loss, the deprivation of a reasonable use, is not offset by any gain to the public. The public doesn't have anything to gain by preventing a solar array from being developed on this property. It's not in an area where it's going to be impeding anybody's views. There are no negative externalities like noise, or pollution, or smell, or any of those sort of things that you might want to prevent. Certainly less than what could go in on this property under the scope of agricultural uses. If you put a hog farm there with, you know, a lot of buildings, and all of the smells, and everything that come with a hog farm, that's going to smell worse than a solar array is going to smell. So, there is a lot, nothing is no cost. If the whole world could just be trees and open space, that would be lovely. But if you're comparing this to any other conceivable use of this property, this is going to be less impactful to the neighbors, less impactful to the public, and carry with it a public benefit. So, when you're doing that balancing act, there's really no public gain, there's no public benefit in denying this variance that would offset the loss to the applicant. The values to the surrounding property element, again, as I mentioned, this is well-screened by undeveloped land around it. To the south, it's not even taking up the whole of this property, so you've got the undeveloped land from the landowner to the south. It's not going to create an unsightly visual aspect to any residential area. It's not going to impact the essential character of the neighborhood. It would be no different from a neighboring property value standpoint as having a greenhouse there. Visually, there'd be something there that you can see, but that's really all it is. There's no other negative externalities at all, certainly less than any other reasonable use. Finally, on the hardship element, this is a multi-pronged element, so I'm going to go through it.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I was asleep at the switch here. The values of surrounding properties, what do you have that's concrete, that you can say will not disturb the values of the neighboring properties? Have you got anything from somebody that is officially involved with land use?
Sure do. So there was, there's no study in New Hampshire specifically, but there was a study in Connecticut done to understand the impact of real estate next, directly next to a solar farm. So, I don't have it here with me this evening, but I can just give you some high-level details of it. The net outcome of that study was that there could be an impact to a property in the like 5% to 7% range. They then compared that to, if you went to buy a home that had a pool, and you had little children, that may be, that may devalue the property to you as a buyer. Or if you were to go buy a home that had granite countertops, you just don't like them, that might take away from it. So, it wasn't, in this study, there was not this huge impact that says, if you live near a solar farm, your property value is going to go down by some huge amount. And in some cases, there was a benefit, the perceived benefit. You know, there are younger families that have a strong opinion of moving away from fossil fuels. So to be in a community where they can say that we are supporting living near one of these actually brings value. So, it's an opinion. You could have an opinion, and we could have an opinion, and one may not be right or wrong. But there was a study done in Connecticut about it. And most of the work was done like directly where you could see it.
Well, I'm reading from what you have in number four.
Yep.
It says, the proposed solar farm is consistent with surrounding area and neighborhood. How is that?
Because of the vegetative screening?
No, the solar farm.
Right. Because of the vegetative screening, if you're in the solar farm, sure, you can see it. But any of the uses around the property, they're not going to notice this. So, it's not going to change, you know, nobody who's living on the subdivision where they're, we were talking about earlier, what the axis is going through, they're not going to suddenly feel like they're living in an industrial site. This is going to be well-separated visually, by distance, by a number of things. So, everybody surrounding it really is not going to have any visual impact. There's the aspect of, to the south as well, because landowner's property itself is creating that separation. The landowner owns the land to the northwest, I believe, as well. So, again, this would, if it had any impact, it would have impact on the landowner herself. The reality is, there's no reason to suspect that there would be any impact to property values in the area, given all of these unique conditions of the property. And the board also has to keep in mind that the question is not necessarily, will development of this property impact the value of surrounding properties, but will the variance impact the value of surrounding properties? So, is it better for abutting properties to have open, undeveloped, green space around them? Always. But that's not what the board has before it as a decision. The board, the town as a general, and this has gone in front of the Supreme Court a couple of times, you can't require the property to be maintained in a open, undeveloped space. You have to compare it to what is a permissible use in this property, and would allowing solar instead of greenhouses result in a detrimental to, detrimental impact to the property values surrounding it, not merely would development of the property at all create a negative impact.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm just read your other line. Although the use of the property will change from its current use of animal grazing, the use as a solar farm is a more desirable use.
Yes.
I would say that's very subjective.
It certainly is.
And I, as when we deliberate, I think I can enumerate why I feel that way.
If you have any questions about it, I'm happy to address them.
I'm good. Thank you.
Has there been any example of somebody that owned, let's say the system goes in, and then they sell their property, wouldn't that property sell at a higher level because they have income coming in?
The underlying landowner?
If the, if the, the person that owns this property gets the solar farm, and five years from now goes to sell the property.
Yep.
They sell the property with the solar farm there that has a generated income, I would think their property might even.
Yeah, the landowner on which the solar farm exists.
Would the town turn, normally turn around and assess the value of that property higher because it has a commercial application on it?
Yes.
So the town's going to get more tax revenue on that?
There will be more tax revenue to the town because of this. As Andrew mentioned before, there's currently a pilot agreement.
I have solar panels at home in Wolfboro, and they tax me on it. So, that's going to be another revenue generator.
Right now, undeveloped land in current use, not very great for the tax base. This will increase the town's tax base.
And when it comes out of current use, there's a. And when it comes out of current use, there's a penalty.
Exactly. But in this case, there will be an increase in the tax revenue going to the town if, assuming this is approved and makes it through the process.
Okay, you were going to do number five, and I interrupted you.
I'm sorry, say that again.
You were doing number five, and I interrupted you.
Sure. And I just heard from Andrew that the expectation is that the tax base will increase by about 30-fold. So the hardship element. This is a multi-pronged element. The first is whether the special conditions of this property distinguish it from other properties in the area, such that the burden on this property is different than the burden on the others. And as we went through, there are a number of unique conditions on this property. The fact that it's bisected by the wetlands, and a large portion of it is taken by wetlands, particularly the portion that is closest to the public highway, significantly limit the use of this property for almost any development. Separately, the soil quality that we talked about a little bit limits its ability to be used for agricultural purposes. It's currently used for animal grazing, but beyond that, if you try to expand the agricultural use, it's going to be a limiting factor. The fact that it's in this area surrounded by these properties, special conditions don't necessarily need to be negative conditions of the property. There's been a lot of case law about this in New Hampshire that if the property is uniquely suited to this use, unlike other properties, that's a special condition that can give rise to a hardship. And in this case, this property is uniquely suited to this use. The fact that it's already been cleared, it's very flat, it's uniquely suited for solar panels in this layout. Some other property, if you want to put solar somewhere else, might have to cut down a lot of trees. That's going to have an impact on the environment. There's not going to be any environmental impact, negative environmental impact of having it here. Obviously, there's a positive environmental impact. So there's a number of unique conditions. That totality of all of those conditions together create the unique circumstances that give rise to the hardship. The second part of this prong is whether there's a fair and substantial relationship between the general purposes of the zoning ordinance and the application here. That goes to whether the harms that a zoning ordinance is designed to prevent, if any of the zoning ordinance, zoning harms are here, would be created by this proposal. And in this case, they really wouldn't be. All of those things I talked about, noise, pollution, traffic, population congestion, and the associated burden on schools, emergency access, police, all of that, you wouldn't have that here. The second half of the hardship is, is this a reasonable use? And this goes back to that question of, what do you need to prove a hardship? Under New Hampshire law, under the old law, you had to be able to show that the property was being deprived of all reasonable use. And if there was some alternative use you could put the property to, there was no hardship. That's not the case anymore. That's been overturned by the Supreme Court. The standard now is not, is there an alternative use? But is this use reasonable? And if it is, is it creating any of those zoning harms? That's that first prong that I talked about. But the only question here is not, can we do something else with this property? But is it suited for this use? And the answer there is unequivocally yes, for all of those reasons that I've talked about before. It is a reasonable use here because it's not going to create any of the negative externalities. This property is suited for it. And as I mentioned before, local and state law both expressly state that solar is something that should be encouraged. So generally speaking, it's reasonable as well. I'm happy to address any questions or particular concerns that the board may have.
I don't have any. You?
Luke?
No questions.
Okay. Do you want to go into deliberations with the public hearing still open? Or would you like to close the public hearing?
I would move to close the public hearing and that the board deliberate on the five criteria. That's what we typically do.
So we want a motion?
That was a motion.
Okay.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay. So number one, now I'm going to be trying to write down findings of facts. So if we find a fact, let me know, and I'll write it down. I would say that.
We do one and two together.
Yes, but, right, okay. So I will say what I want to say about that one. I do think it's a benefit to the public interest because there's an increase in tax, and that's a fact.
Because of what?
There's an increase in tax revenue, and that's a fact. That's, I think, a fact for our findings of fact. What else do I have? Oh. And I think if we're doing one and two together, although we're not getting any electrical out of this, it does have a regional positive impact. And we always consider regional impacts when we have large projects that impact something outside of the borders of the town. So in a general sense, I think this is a positive because of the regional impact over time, reducing the necessity for fossil fuels a little bite at a time.
Well, I would add that one and two, it must not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and I'm not convinced that that's the case. When you take and put 17 to 20 acres in a change of use from grazing and hay fields to solar equipment, that certainly is going to change the neighborhood as well as the access. Let me just point out to my counterparts here that what we're doing is, and I'm reflecting on the master plan. I worked on the land use section, and I worked on the natural resources section. And what we're doing here is, we're making a trade-off. We're going to give one preference to solar, which makes people feel good, and we're going to give up something else that makes people feel good, which is farming and agriculture and unfragmented land and open space. By the way, that's not five-acre zoning, it's 10-acre zoning. So the future land use guiding principle was the protection of natural resources and aesthetics, as well as the state law also says to encourage the preservation of agricultural lands and buildings and the agricultural operation described in the statute, which I've shown you, Audrey. So also, the master plan says, an increase of agricultural products, farms, markets, use of agricultural land, reemergence of land farming signals the reemergence of agricultural farming. And the town agricultural group and the planning board and individual farms and our farmers' market are all trying to keep it going and improve upon having more farming. The recommendations from the future land use was to preserve open space and farmlands, specifically said, and farmlands. And then the natural resources section is preserve unfragmented lands. So what this does is allow the wildlife to have its corridors and to have its pastures. And the minute you start breaking that up and have your 1,200 arrays, you're therefore destroying the unfragmented lands. And the natural resources section also says, regulate development of commercial and private properties to protect our natural resources. And this does not do this. There are negative effects associated with this, and it's not the noise, it's not the electricity, it's not some kid gets in there and gets electrocuted. The negative effect is the alteration of the site. It's going to be 20 acres and our easement altered. It's never going to be the same. It's that beautiful field and pasture is going to be gone forever. And it's going to adversely affect and have a loss to the habitat, interfere with, they have to do a drainage plan that naturally is taken care of at this time with the open hay fields. They said they're not going to scrape topsoil, they're going to stick some posts in there, but there'll be an alteration, and I don't see it as in a positive matter. The loss of farms and culture will forever change the life as we've known it in that area. And I live up in that area, so I know what it's like. So to me, one and two do not fit the bill.
I'd like to comment on it.
Yeah, me too.
First of all, the applicant said that they were going to graze sheep in there.
The application what?
The applicant stated that they were going to graze sheep in there. I have solar panels, the deer are under there every single day chewing on grass and all that, and turkeys. Even had a moose out there eating grass underneath the solar panels. So the ability for animals to do that is not a big problem, and minor ground mounted, just like they're going to do. As far as the variance requested would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, you can't see it from anywhere. It's landlocked in the back.
Well, you can. I've run over onto North Wakefield Road, and you look right up and you see that subdivision over there. They're going to be looking down on that. What did they say? Eight to 10 feet tall, 1,200? You're going to see that.
Well done.
No comments, please.
As far as.
We're going to fight amongst ourselves here.
As far as the variance will not threaten the public safety and welfare, I mean, there's no families in there, there's minor incursions going in for people that are maintaining, and it's just like a cell tower where if you get somebody in there once a month, hopefully, maybe that's a lot. I mean, I've had mine for six years, nobody's touched them. As far as to the town also, no kids in school on that 20 acres, it'll be a revenue generator. You can't see, again, you can't see it from anywhere. And if you're going to put it somewhere, I mean, you drive up like Interstate 495, you see these solar farms from the highway that are, they're massive. This thing you're not going to see. The one concern I have about all this, and Kevin, you brought it up, is where are these egresses going to go? How are you going to get in? How are you going to get out? They have concerns from that development, and that has to somehow be addressed. That's the biggest thing that I see as a problem. I have no problem voting for the thing to happen, but it's what happens to the folks that live up there. How do they get their say in the whole thing? That's all I have to say.
I have two, I guess, thoughts in rebuttal to what you said. And so you brought up the Agricultural Commission, you know, they're increasing the ability for farms to make a living and sell their things in the farmers' markets. And part of that whole discussion, actually, because I was there when the sausage was being made, was that one of the reasons why there are not many restrictions on that is because it's hard to make a living farming. And they want farmers to have potentially off-season or bad season income that's going to hold them over so they can continue to farm. And this type of development does that. It supports farming by providing a steady income when farming is up and down. So I think that's a positive. Also, you mentioned that the solar farm is going to fragment the agricultural land, and agriculture actually fragments the land in the same way. So I don't see that as anything worse than what's allowed to be there as far as fragmenting the land, although that does really concern me with wildlife corridors and the lack of that. But this doesn't do it any worse than a cow field or a corn field or anything else. And that's what brought to my mind. We don't have to argue about it.
No, I have to disagree with you. And first of all, agritourism, I never can say that, is not solar farm. That was not included.
I did not say it was agritourism.
Just making it clear.
Okay.
Now, we have spent a lot of money in the town of Wolfboro to do our mapping for natural resources, for which there are several different ones. This one is wildlife habitat. And, I don't have my glasses. And the area that we're speaking of is up in here, okay? Up in the top. And what those colors represent is, the bright pink is highest ranked habitat in New Hampshire. Number two, the green, is highest ranked habitat in biological region. Number three is supporting the supporting landscape that supports the animals through that area. And it's not a joke. This is, the town did a lot of work to protect our farm area, our slopes, our wetlands, and amongst it weighed heavily in on it.
Can I see that, please?
Was wildlife habitat.
I'll give it back to you.
It'd be nice if they had these online. Quite the plan. Okay. Do you have a comment about these two sessions? Chuck, do you have a comment about these two sessions?
Well, yeah, I have a comment. I mean, you quoted the master plan, but the master plan also calls for, the master plan also calls for us to encourage, develop alternate, you know, fossil-free sources for energy. So we have a, you know, in the master plan, we have kind of two conflicting goals here. One is to protect agriculture and encourage it, but on the other hand, we want to be less dependent on fossil fuel.
Yeah, but that's why I point that out. You've got budding theories here, but the way the master plan handled the solar part of it was to try and get it like at the new hockey rink, to put it on the library and so forth and so on. It didn't talk about industrial-sized solar fields. It did not talk about that.
So are you opposed to it?
I can't.
Are you opposed to solar power?
No, not if it's individual in Wolfboro.
Okay, can we move on?
We're talking about our community. What happens in the world is beyond me.
Let's keep going. Number three.
I think when you look at farming around the country, you always read about these farms that get sold off because the people can't make a go of it. And I have not seen that about this particular location. And what happens when they get sold? Developers buy the property, they put 100 houses in there. If this is a way for them to supplement their income and at the same time use the property for grazing, I think that's substantial justice.
I further agree with that. You know, I don't know how many acres Amanda owns in Wolfboro and Ospey and surrounding towns, but I assume her farmland is far substantial to 16 acres that she's looking to convert to a solar farm. Not a farmer, never have been. I can only imagine how hard it is. So, you know, if this is how she wants to use a part of her land, I think it is substantial justice.
I agree with that point as well.
I do. I don't think there's any great benefit to the town that outweighs the benefit to the landowner to this. I don't see any, I don't see any large harm to the town. I do see a large benefit to the landowner.
Well, I'd like to register that I don't see that this request is consistent with the surrounding area.
How does that fit into three?
Substantial justice is done.
Well, the other comments that are in there is that there's no traffic.
Yeah, how. Yeah, how, how, how is it not?
It's not done. I'm saying it's not done. It does, you, you want to have a debate about it?
No, I, I don't understand what you said with regard to the number three.
Well, number three is...
Substantial justice?
Yeah. Substantial, I'm saying it is not done because it is not consistent with the surrounding area.
Okay.
Period.
All right.
I'm not going to sit here and explain it.
All right, number four.
So I think, I think on number four too, I think, you know, as evidence, you know, we don't have any real studies that can say that, you know, it's going to decrease property values. You know, I will say, for a neighbor, solar farm sounds pretty quiet and pretty unintrusive compared to what other activities could be going on in a farming environment. So, you know, since we don't have anything that says that solar farms are diminished property values, you know, I'd go with the other and say that there is no, there will not be any diminished property values.
I agree. We don't have anything that says that it's going to diminish property values. And I think we have to go with the fact that we don't have anything rather than we don't have anything that shows that it will. We don't have anything that says that will diminish property values.
No, I agree, and I, I think the fact that it's, this particular site is very well hidden just reinforces that.
Just to remind the board, it's the obligation of the applicant to, to bring the fact forward, and we didn't get a fact. But however, I will go along with that we have no fact, so therefore, we're stuck, and we have to just say, yeah, I guess it doesn't.
Okay. So I would like to, I'd like to say one thing that I, I don't think has come up yet very much, and that is related to, if a solar farm goes in Wolfboro and it goes someplace that it doesn't need a variance, I almost don't know where that would be. We don't have many places that allow commercial development. We have the town property behind our spray fields, we have a couple of lots back there, but we don't have a lot of places that could handle this. Therefore, if we're going to have it, it needs a variance someplace. And I think this is as good or better than places that I can think of. So I think the fact that we don't allow it by right very many places, they're not available, is a hardship.
Um, what makes this property uniquely different than its surrounding properties?
It has access and a right-of-way, it's cleared.
I would say nothing.
Okay. Oh, I thought you were asking me for my list.
No, I would say, it is, it looks like there was a previous gravel operation throughout between the Calden Farm and the North Wake, Wakefield Road. There's wetlands and streams and tributaries throughout in the area from Brown Ridge Road to North Wakefield Road. The slopes are throughout. There is nothing that makes it uniquely special, to my view.
What makes it uniquely special is it's flat, it's got a southern view, it's not obstructed by trees, the mountains that are, the hills that are around there are pretty low, so they probably have a 90, what was on the, the percentage? You get, I had a guy come out, and he holds this thing up in the air, and he says, you're like in the 98 percentile of where I wanted to put my panels. I would bet you that this thing is the same, it's in that high 90 count, which makes it very unique because there's not many places like that.
Check my neighborhood, because they are...
They are what?
They are special. You know, that they, the fact that it faces south, you're saying nobody, nobody off of Brown Ridge Road faces south? That's not unique. They are, they're different property. I said my piece, you've said your piece. I don't see it as unique.
It's fine.
Do you have a...
Reasonable, reasonable use.
It is a reasonable use. I think it's, it's unique in that it's already cleared. It has an access and a right-of-way already laid out, or in the process of being laid out. At least it's got a way to get there. I think, I see some other lots here that I think would be more difficult. In both of those, they'd have to be cleared, there would have to be some way to get into I think that's most of it for me. Luke, do you have anything we haven't said?
No. Thank you.
Anybody else want to add anything else? Does anybody want to make a motion?
Before I make the motion, is there any of the five recommended staff things that you'd like to remove, that we'd like to remove? I know we removed a few on the last, the last one.
I would like to do the same type of chopping on that.
Yeah, I think that an amendment needs to be made to this one through five. It's no big deal thing. On number, number two, it's on page three of your paperwork.
Yeah.
Simply insert on the first line, all the documentation submitted in this application package by the applicant on September 24th, 2022, and tonight, 11:14:22.
What is September 24th?
It's the date that was received.
Yeah.
Not that.
We have to include this.
No, it's the date it's received. It's here.
Yeah, it's on April, yeah, October 24th.
No changes after that.
Okay. I'd like to put a condition in.
Okay.
I'd like to put a condition that the right-of-way be in proximity to the access shown on the October 2022 site plan or the existing right-of-way. And what I mean by in proximity, I didn't put in a distance there. I don't know that I have to, but...
Which one, which right-of-way are you referring to? The one with the green dots?
The one that they laid out or the one that they have...
The 40-foot one.
That, the one they have that they haven't used.
The top, one at the top.
No?
The one where we walked in or the one with the green dots?
No, the one with the green dots, which is what they're working on, or their alternate one is over 20 feet on the other, on the other parcel.
Then are you saying both of them?
One or the other.
I would say one or the other because...
Either one.
Where that ties in is down in that drainage area, which is the least obtrusive thing to the people that are going to own houses up in there.
I think they both come out, well, there's a right-of-way all the way across the land...
They're right in the same area.
To the, to the, yeah. So, but if they can't get this right-of-way, they're going to need to use the one that's already there. I don't want them to come back, and I don't want them to put it way someplace else.
It's not going to be cutting up where there's some potential houses up top.
Right.
So how, how do you word that?
How did I word it?
How do you word that?
Yeah.
I said, in proximity to the access shown on the plan of October 2022, or the existing right-of-way, which isn't shown here, but there is one, right? Does that sound reasonable? Okay.
Okay.
You made that a motion?
I made that an amendment.
An amendment? And I made an amendment?
Yes.
So on the two amendments...
All in favor?
All the amendments.
Of the amendments?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Any other changes or amendments before we go for the main motion?
We don't have a motion yet.
Yeah, she made a motion.
For the amendments.
But I mean...
I put in some dates.
Yes.
He made a motion.
Not yet.
You haven't made it yet?
He didn't make one, no.
I was gonna, I asked because I was gonna, I was gonna add those things right into my motion.
Okay.
So if...
So we couldn't have an amendment if we didn't have a motion?
I'll, so I will, yes, we don't even need it, I don't think. I'll make a motion...
Okay.
... to approve case number 15-V22, variance from Article 20, 175-125, permitted uses, tax map 092-003, property off North Wakefield Road, Mountain Laurel Farms Solar Pasture, to approve with the conditions as laid out by the planner and the two conditions outlined by Audrey and Suzanne, which refer to the documentation on September 24th, 2022 that was received, and tonight, and the right-of-way being in proximity on the plan or the alternate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No. There you go. We have to do a finding of fact. Do you want me to work on that?
Yeah.
Do we want to wait on findings of fact till we get together and look at them? Or how do you want to deal with this new thing we've got to do?
Yeah, I want to see them.
Okay, so we'll do that, we'll, I'll work on them, using the tape and whatever. You can send me ideas, and then we'll approve them next time, or look at them next time.
Okay. And could I ask that we postpone the minutes because they were incomplete at the end?
They were?
Yeah.
Audrey, did you close the meeting?
Close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing?
Oh, we did.
We did.
Yeah.
We're not, we're still yakking, so we can't close the meeting yet, Tim. Yak yak.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.